And code section 54953 as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under government code section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with government code section 54953, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference only, and there will be no physical location open to the public. Planning commissioners and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio and/or video. The public can observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via cable channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raised hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number, as shown in the Zoom interface. And with that said, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Berman.
Here.
Commissioner Domarat.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Full house tonight. So let's move on to salute to the flag. Commissioner Godwin, can you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get into administrative business, I'll ask if there's any public comments on the administrative business?
There are no hands raised.
All right, I'll close that public comment period and on to administrative business. Approval of the order of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve or amend the order? Commissioner Ferguson?
I would move that we rearrange the agenda tonight to put commission and staff communications between the first and second consideration items of our agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you for that motion, Commissioner Ferguson. Is there a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for placing the commission and staff communications between agendas items, agenda items one and two. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. So these are the minutes from May 2, 2022 and May 16, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve either one or the other or both together? Commissioner Godwin.
I move we approve both sets of minutes for me.
All right, motion and do we have a second? Commissioner Domarat.
I second that motion.
Motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domarat.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Designation of liaison to city council meetings. We have a couple here. There's one for a special meeting of the city council on June 25 to review the general plan and EIR. Then there's also one for June 27 for the 570 Cressby appeal. And then lastly, there's one for July 11, the Sharp Park specific plan. Before we talk about these items for liaison designation as a commission, Mr. Murdoch, do you mind just giving us a little bit of background of each item?
Absolutely, Chair Berman. So the first item, the June 25 special meeting, that is a Saturday meeting of the city council to consider the planning commission's recommendation to approve the general plan update and to certify the environmental impact report, or EIR. And so the commission would need a liaison to represent the commission's action to recommend the general plan update and EIR certification at that special meeting. The June 27th item is a public hearing to consider an appeal of the planning commission's approval of the 570 Cressby project and the associated recommendations for the legislative actions like the general plan amendment, the rezoning, and the development agreement, for instance. And so the liaison from the commission would be representing the commission's action on that project approval. And then the July 11th item, it would be a commission liaison to the city council on the commission's recommendation on the Sharp Park specific plan. That one's a bit different in the sense that the commission hasn't yet taken an action. However, given the timing of that meeting relative to the potential cancellation of the July 5th planning commission meeting, which is another agenda item to be considered, I identified that opportunity to at least have a placeholder liaison, or perhaps we take it up after the commission reaches a recommendation.
Thank you, Acting Planning Director Murdoch. Before we take volunteers, I think just my thoughts on the request for liaison for July 11. I appreciate the placeholder. My opinion is I think it would be good to hold off on designating that liaison until after we review the Sharp Park specific plan. Of course, if anyone wants to preemptively volunteer just as a placeholder as well, we could talk about that, but I'd like to bring this up again after we actually review the Sharp Park specific plan as a commission. Anyone else's thoughts, or would anyone like to volunteer for the June 25 or June 27? I recall for June 25, the hearing on the general plan and EIR, we had Vice Chair Hauser that volunteered. Vice Chair Hauser, go ahead.
Yeah, that still works for me if nobody else is passionately wanting to do it. I would really like to do it.
I think, I think we appreciate you volunteering for that. So thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. How about for the June 27 meeting for the 570 Cressby appeal? Any volunteers for that one? And Acting Planning Director Murdoch, perhaps are you able to give insight on the appeal itself? Or perhaps can you remind us of the project?
Sure, I'll do the latter. So the project is a mixed-use project proposed on the site next to the Pacifica Community Center. The project involves purchase of a portion of the city's parcel and combining that with the existing private property to create a mixed-use project with 19 residential units and commercial floor area on the ground floor at the front of the project site. It also included a development agreement with certain public and developer benefits with that project, including off-site improvements at the community center. And then also involved heritage tree removal as well.
And do you mind reminding us, was this one that Commissioner Hauser had to recuse herself for? Okay, so that's probably not a good one for Vice Chair Hauser. Okay, Commissioner Lille.
I did volunteer to be liaison last time this was up, but then it was moved to this date. Unfortunately, I'm not available next Monday to attend, so sorry.
Luck so be it. Any other, any potential volunteers? Is anyone available on that day? Commissioner Godwin.
I'm available.
Might you be willing to be the liaison?
If nobody else wants it, I can do my best.
I think the commission would greatly appreciate you volunteering. So if that's okay with you, Commissioner Godwin, I think we'll put you down as the liaison.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Berman, in relation to the July 11 meeting, perhaps you could clarify, when you mentioned taking this up after the commission makes a recommendation, did you mean potentially later in this meeting if the commission reaches a recommendation or at some subsequent meeting of the planning commission?
Likely at some subsequent meeting, just kind of realistically seeing that we may not complete our deliberation on the Sharp Park specific plan tonight. My thoughts are, I think similar to most other designation of liaison items, we typically do it after the commission has made a recommendation to city council, especially understanding that maybe not every commissioner is going to vote the same way. So that's my thought. So after we close out item two. Is that acceptable?
Yes, I just needed the clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright.
I have a potential conflict with future meetings unless it's the July 5 meeting that you're talking about. So if you want to have a quorum of non-refused people, you may want to reconsider whether we're going to get that vote in this evening, just to be transparent.
Commissioner Wright, would you prefer that we designate the liaison perhaps directly after public comment for this? I don't know if that's even, I guess, what are you, what's your desire for the designation of liaison for the Sharp Park specific plan?
It's less about the designation of the liaison than I would be inclined to want to vote sooner rather than later. But I do understand we do want to hear from everybody that we can, but I'm willing to go as late as it takes.
Okay, and are you opposed to saving the designation? You're not opposed to saving the designation of liaison until after our determination on the Sharp Park specific plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, so that clears up the designation of liaisons. So we'll move on to the consideration of cancellation of meeting July 5. So this is a consideration item. And I guess Acting Planning Director Murdoch, do you need us to vote on a grants of this cancellation of the meeting?
I would defer to Assistant City Attorney Sharma as far as the mechanism. I think really we would ask first to see if there's interest among the commission for such a cancellation. It's a, it's a meeting that's typically canceled, given that the challenges of scheduling and having a quorum of commissioners so close to the Independence Day holiday. And so wanted to bring it up for consideration at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Can we table that decision until such a time as we see how far we make it through the current agenda items prior to deciding whether we may or may not need that meeting?
I think that would be a question for Ms. Sharma.
Yes, it is the chair's discretion to move the items if the planning commission agrees, if the remainder of the commissioners agree with tabling that for later.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission. Thank you, Commissioner Wright. That's a good strategy. Commissioner Ferguson?
I know that I have to recuse myself from the Sharp Park considerations anyways, but I won't be available for that meeting date.
Okay, Commissioner Lille.
I'll just add, I won't be available as well on that date.
You will not be available?
I will not, will not, correct.
Okay. So, and then Commissioner Wright, did you happen to say that you would not be available on the 5th regardless?
I am available on the 5th.
Oh, you are available. Okay. Commissioner Domarat?
I would be available on the 5th, but as I mentioned to others, I have a short time fuse today ending earlier than about 10:00 PM. So I'm not sure how that would affect any vote for the plan for later on this evening and continuation of that discussion for Sharp Park in the future.
Okay. So if, yeah, so I guess we should look at trying to form a quorum, if we would even have a quorum. Oh, Commissioner Domarat, your hand's still up. Do you have another item? Okay. Vice Chair Hauser, are you available? Or what are your thoughts on canceling the July 5 meeting?
I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other. I am available if need be.
Okay. And I can be available as well. So I think we would have, oh, Commissioner Ferguson?
No dog in the fight for me because I won't be there, but I just wonder if, that is, I think, a recognized holiday by a lot of people, so you might miss out on some community engagement for that meeting.
Is the 5th, is it Tuesday? I believe the-
My mistake. I just, I have it in my head that everyone's going to be on vacation.
Sure. Oh, no, me myself, I will be driving home that day from vacation, but I can be available. So I guess it sounds like we are, we could have a quorum. And I did like Commissioner Wright's suggestion of trying to get a sense after at least starting agenda item number two to determine if we could utilize the July 5 date. Otherwise, I think, especially I understand how hard staff and the commission and everyone has been working this past month for the general plan, the EIR, the Sharp Park specific plan. I'm sure many people would appreciate having that day off just in recognition of the holiday, even though it may not be a holiday in itself. So I guess, can we, is that possible? Can we revisit this consideration item at the end of tonight? Because I'm guessing staff needs to have an understanding of whether or not we're going to have that meeting before we finish tonight. Is that correct?
Well, it would be preferable. I think I'm just trying to provide some certainty to the community and to the commissioners as well as other staff. And so if we find out following tonight that there is not a quorum available on July 5, then we will cancel the meeting and will not be able to conduct it. I think if we knew that commissioners preferred not to have the meeting at this point and would be unavailable, I'm simply trying to address that eventuality so we can let people know and advance and plan business accordingly with applicants and for other business.
Okay. I mean, I kind of get the sense, I kind of get the sense that maybe the preference is to not have a meeting on that day, but we can, of course, be flexible if it would be beneficial to city council's schedule. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Domarat?
There was some discussion to potentially continue tonight's meeting if it's not completed later on this week. Is that still being considered?
Right, thank you, Commissioner Domarat. I just, I wanted to advise Chair Berman that it looks like a quorum of the commission would be available on Thursday, June 23, starting at 7:00 PM. And so that is another alternative date prior to July 5 that the commission might be able to use to conclude its recommendation. Currently, Chair Berman, Commissioner Domarat, Commissioner Godwin, and Vice Chair Hauser have indicated their availability. And Commissioner Wright, I believe you indicated you will be out of town and unavailable. So those would be the four eligible commissioners. All are available to participate on Thursday evening.
Okay, I think then I would prefer to revisit this consideration item at the end of potentially that Thursday adjourned meeting. Does anyone, does everyone else agree? All right, I see head nods. Okay, and then, sorry, remind me, do we need to take a vote on this? Or I guess we're gonna, we're gonna, got it, we're gonna reconsider it. All right, thank you. That is probably the longest administrative business that I have ever seen. But good that we got through it. All right, oral communications. So this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes.
Good evening, Chair, Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. It looks like we have at least five hands raised and counting. So give me a second and I'll set up the timer to go ahead and get us started.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First up, we have Dan Studjink. And following Dan will have Cliff Lawrence. Dan, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple items that you've, a couple procedures you've routinely engaged in that are antithetical to good planning process and Robert's rules and the City of Pacifica Planning Commission bylaws. Anytime you add an item to an agenda, it requires public comment. You can't add evacuation routes without extending public comment, as was done at the June 11 meeting. For two years, there's not been a single planning commission meeting in person. It's all been online. No one at home can see their camera. No one can tell how many people are there. No one can tell, you know, what the total attendance is, the total number of viewers who aren't speaking. You know, there were numerous instances where the City of Pacifica's phone lines did not meet the technical description of open meetings. Anybody that complained could overturn this. You know, you're a quasi-legislative body versus a legislative body, but your actions are subject to the rule of law, Robert's rules. And if any of you do not have the Pacifica Planning Commission bylaws, you know, feel free to send me an email, helppacific@gmail.com, and I'll send them to you from when I was, I was a planning commissioner. Let's just walk through what happened this earlier tonight when you changed the order of agenda there. You asked for public comments before the motion to change the order of agenda was made. So nope, I immediately put my hand up, but no public comment was ever taken on the motion to change the order of agenda. When you don't have any explanation, link, text on the site to that effect, anyone that calls in sees that and they're like, oh, they're already at staff communications. I've missed this completely, and they hang up. You can't take public comment before something is on the agenda, just like what happened with the evacuation plan. Now, the evacuation route is the most important thing in the entire general plan. And quite frankly, you've endangered the durability of the whole decision by not re-agendizing that and not allowing public comment. Again, I've never seen any of you guys in a public meeting anywhere. So I'm guessing this is the first, first organized public law meetings that you've ever been involved in. But you've got to do this professionally. I mean, there are laws about this. There's procedures. I'm on six of these meetings a week, and I've never seen anything the way these are done. Mr. Murdoch, lovely guy, not an attorney. If you have questions, you need to ask City Attorney Deepa Sharma the procedure. Thank you very much.
All right, and next up, we will have Cliff Lawrence followed by Christine Bowles. Cliff, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I hope I did it. Okay, that work? Yes, no?
Yes, yes.
Ah, thank you. Good evening, honorable commissioners. I hope over the course of time you'll understand that I've come before you most of the time as an advocate of public engagement. So with that said, I want, first want to congratulate your commission, your members with, in the course of your last deliberations, when you were talking about future opportunities to discuss maybe some changes in the general plan and blah, blah, blah. You mentioned the open communication period of your regular meetings. It pleased me very much. The reason why I asked to speak tonight is because in your annual report, you seem to send a different message. Words are important. Truth matters. Be impeccable in our speech. In your annual report, there is the phrase about open communications served as a public comment outlet for community topics of concern on the agenda. You know, I hope some of you understand how this sounds like you're giving the public opportunity to vent rather than to come forth with positive- positive creative ideas of value that they're trying to share with you. This is not venting. So in the language of words, you can do better than I, but as a starter, I would suggest to you use the word channel. So imagine this, that the open communications served as a public comment channel for community topics of concern. I really appreciate all the work you people put into this and how precise you are. And and I hope your appreciation of precision understands what I'm talking about, the difference between using the word outlet and channel. I look forward to what you put in your next year's report. Thank you.
All right, um thank you, Cliff. Uh next, we have Christine Bowles followed by Sam Casillas. Uh Christine, please go ahead and um unmute yourself.
Thank you, Bonnie, and um good evening Commissioners and staff. This is Christine Bowles. Um I'm an architect uh in the Manor District. First, I want to thank you for your time and for some of the good questions you raised last weekend during the general plan and EIR review. My intention throughout this process was to try to work with you and staff to update and improve the documents to ensure consistency and completeness and to give you and the city council the tools you need to evaluate future development to ensure we are not creating more problems for our residents as the city grows. I focused my research and comments primarily on issues of public safely safety, and I'm honestly flabbergasted that you approved these documents last week without corrections on these basic issues. You approved them without seeing new landslide maps that staff is apparently still working on revising after seeing my email with Dr. Frost of the Department of Conservation. I'd certainly like to see these new maps and compare them to the data I've obtained to make sure that they are correct this time. You approved them without adding a single implementation measure for debris flow landslides. Have you even read the current 1983 safety element that was completely revised after the devastating winter of 1982 to focus on these very real threats Pacifica faced then and continues to face now in wet El Niño years? The current general plan does not even mention debris flow. I pointed that out and gave you specific language to consider adding. It was not even discussed. I hope those three children did not die in vain. You approved the general plan with a blank fire map in all the city limits. You know this is not correct and said it would be updated when it produces new maps in the next year. This is not acceptable under SEQA. You have to use best available data, not no data, in anticipation of better data. The fact that the planning commission and city council already approved the local coastal land use plan with fire maps showing very high fire hazard severity zones in the Pedro Point area shows that there is data available that the city agrees with. And it directly contradicts both the general plan and the EIR that says there are no properties in very high fire hazard severity zones. I'm not a lawyer, but from what I understand, this is called a fatal flaw. No one I've talked to is looking for errors in these documents in order to slow down the process or sue the city. We're looking for errors and omissions so that we can clean up the documents and better protect the city from lawsuits and better protect residents from harm. It is in all of our interests to adopt a proper general plan as soon as possible. But this version that you all approved last week is not yet ready. We're still willing to help you if you allow us to. You have not even reviewed the the minutes from that meeting to see if what is being presented to the city council incorporates all your comments. Is is that is that proper process? And are you sure that what you approved is ready for deliberation and approval? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um next, we have Sam Casillas. He is the last hand we have raised at this time. Sam, he please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, uh Planet Commissioners. During the meeting, the last meeting on the sixth, to consider the recommendations approved, the 2022 general plan and FER Deputy Planning Commission Director uh Christian Murdock made several statements that mischaracterized the comments from the Pedro Point neighborhood and also in their work with the Coast Commission. Um the Pedro Point comments did not focus on turning the field into a pumpkin patch. The community's comments were taken out of context. The community focused on viable recreation, commercial recreational businesses that could draw in visitors that would generate sales tax revenues. The examples the community gave included developing something uh akin to the Swanson Berry Farm in Davenport that offers multiple family activities that draws in thousands of families during the weekend and holidays. Further, Mr. Murdock also made it seem that there were balanced comments of three categories of comments advocated for either conservation, low intensity visitor serving or to build out the field. I urge the Commissioners to read the comment letters from individuals and the Pedro Point Community Association. The overwhelming number of comments from the neighborhood were either for conservation backed by environmental impact data or uh ally VC, the the um uh visitor commercial to potentially produce tax revenue for a city that is on the verge of bankruptcy and in dire need of commercial tax revenue, not this housing in a swamp. Fine, also, the wetlands designation, a wetland, a question was asked as to whether the wetlands designation of Pedro Point Field, Mr. Murdock made it seem like the fish wildlife designation recently recently just manic magically vanished from the field after the last 2014 federal wetlands documented designation. If the commercial Commissioners would have fully read the letters from the PPCA, they would have realized that the owner of the field have been illegally ditching the field to drain it and the citizens have started documenting the COSSAC violations as far back as as January 19th, 2006. Fish, state fish and wildlife also stated in their comments for the denial of the recent CDP for uh 505 San Pedro, that the field was most likely wetlands. You all may try to ignore this data, but these are the facts. Mr. Murdock also made it sound like the city has been working with the Coast Commission with a two-year head start. In fact, the Coast Commission has repeatedly requested hazard and environmental data for areas including the field for the past two years, and the city has refused to produce the requested data. The city council has also directed the Plan Department to stop working on the LCP well before the Plan Department confirmed this to us on October 2021. The Coast Commission in turn has repeatedly recommended the city not approve the 22 general plan until the LCP is certified because there are so many major discrepancies that will need to be addressed. Understand that the approval of the general plan without the certified LCLUP will force the city to use two general plans, forcing this the coastal area to use the 1980 GP while the rest of the city uses the 22 GP. Thank you.
Thank you, um we have one more hand raised. Someone with the handle name Richard, Richard, can you please provide your full name for the record and um go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yes, this is Richard Harris. I'm with the San Francisco Public Golf Lines. Um my question is a procedural question uh having to do with the appeal time. You announced at the Saturday's meeting that there would be a 10-day appeal time. Uh I had a very limited issue. I've reviewed the transcript of the hearings. I know what was said from transcribing the relevant areas, but I have not seen from the city uh minutes of that meeting and I have seen updated document uh showing whether the the uh comments that were made by the commission and and you said that they would be adopted into the final version, whether they in fact have made it into the final version that will be presented to the city. So my procedural question is, does the 10-minute or the 10-day appeal time run from that Saturday meeting? In which case, it's pretty hard to appeal since we don't we don't know what is going to be delivered to the city. Or does that 10-day appeal time run from the time that we have a written uh that we have in writing what will be presented to the city on Saturday? And I would just ask you to make that clear. My suggestion is that it runs from the time that interested the the citizenry sees something in writing that that is the version that will be presented to the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, um we have a few more or a couple more hands raised. Uh Remy Tan, uh please go ahead and unmute yourself and then up next we'll have Judy Hansen. So Remy, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Remy Tan, um architect, Pacific Manor. Um I want to uh also, you know, support the previous few speakers uh in that I'm I'm concerned because there's no meeting minutes that have been officially published of the last planning commission meeting uh uh Saturday, um a couple Saturdays ago. And I know on that Saturday, I had some obligations, had to leave the meeting before the planning commission deliberation and decisions made, so I have no idea what, you know, transpired. I heard there were some changes to the uh to the uh um general plan. And um you know, hard to comment when you don't know what it is. Uh there's again, nothing on any of the city agenda packet. I looked at the uh city council packet, there's nothing there. So um you know, I'm I'm also curious how how to respond even to that. Um my comment was actually a very concerning one was about the uh fact that the um the the general plan does not account for the regional housing needs assessment number of about 1,892 units and the the plan only comes for 900. And again, um you know, that's a serious problem because the EIR and the land use plan will be uh not in compliance with the uh HCD's uh uh RENA numbers. And that's an automatic rejection by HCD. And um cities who don't bring their general plan and their housing elements in line with the RENA are subject to lose basically all state funding, starting with obviously housing funding first. But I heard from a number of uh well-known sources, uh I believe Scott, one of Scott Weiner's senior housing um policy people and a couple of uh planning planners in San Francisco, Marin, mentioned that uh that um the the city would also lose general fund from the state. So this is quite a quite a serious matter that uh the planning commission needs to uh get up to speed on. Uh Diet and Batia, the uh the consultants should be know should know about this stuff. And you know, I'm appalled that the consultant has not advised the you know, the city uh planning commission, city council or the city's planning staff about the the actual law. I mean, that's the job of the consultant and you know, I think that's a fireable offense that they should their contract should be terminated on on something like that. Um so I do, you know, speak very strongly, but this is a very serious problem. The city is going to lose state funding if not corrected. Thank you.
All right, and next we have uh Judy Hansen. Um Judy, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for, you know, all the effort and and intention and and work that you have done. Um and I I don't mean to be rude, but this really reminds me of this time my sister was selling a family property. And she was telling me, oh, I can't handle it or this or that, but it was all distraction. And in the meantime, because I didn't know I was supposed to buy it, but the distraction was to keep me distracted while she proceeded with the selling. And again, I I I don't mean to be rude. It's it's just that I keep hearing people report that their wants and desires are not being heard, that people are coming together at meetings and saying, no, we we don't want this. I think it was Overpass. Um we're concerned about the hillsides. We're concerned about these legal details that aren't being and 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 I'm not aware, and I'm going to try to be more aware now that it's summertime, of of what you guys are doing in in response. Because I I'm just hearing these very concerned, very well-educated, very well-spoken, very well-documented people present these these concerns. And it it really reminds me of of my sister distracting me with conversation while she did just as she pleased. And and so I know sometimes two parties, you know, don't see eye to eye. And sometimes a third person, in fact, I had to get a third person, I had to get a lawyer and and straighten things out. And I I was shocked to hear that that was going on. But I I don't want to be shocked by what's happening in my city. I I want my city to to adhere to city, uh what do you call it? Um coastal guidelines, to hillside guidelines. Um the uh the city has personally witnessed tragic beyond words events from hillsides. And and I don't, I I wonder what the third-party step is going to look like if we're not listened to. Um so again, I I I appreciate the respect or I appreciate the work that you've done and the intention. But it's it's looking very concerning when when repeatedly it sounds like people aren't listened to. And and it to me, it it reminds me of when of when my sister was doing something devious behind my back and I had to get a lawyer to stop her. So I hope I hope we can come to understanding and start doing things in accordance to the laws and guidelines and coastal commission and hillside ordinance and fire plans and so forth. Thank you.
Uh Chair Berman, that is the last hand um raised at this time.
All right, thank you, Senior Planner O'Connor. Um I'll close the oral communications. And um Ms. Sharma, do you mind advising? Um there were quite a few comments in the oral communication section that I think the commission would probably want to discuss or ask questions of staff and of you. When is the appropriate time to do that?
The appeal period ran from 10 days from the date of the planning commission's decision. Um so that was uh June 11th um on the general plan update and the EIR. Um and that was specified by the commission on the on the date of the hearing.
So I I guess sorry, backing up a second. Um there's quite a few questions that came up that I think we may want to talk about. Is now the appropriate time to talk about some of the oral communications that we received? It sounds like it is, is that correct?
Yes, Chair Berman, if you would like to discuss that now, then yes, now would be the correct time to do it.
Okay, yeah, um I would like to.
Ms. Sharma, except that the commission can get brief clarifying responses from staff but not engage in a dialogue uh given that these items are not on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct. Brief clarification questions that no action items of these, the the items are actually not before the commission.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Certainly, understood. Um well, I have a few clarification questions and I think some of the commission may as well. Um Ms. Sharma, you you did already start to speak upon the um 10-day appeal time regarding our our last meeting where we provided a recommendation for the general plan and EIR. Um with that, can you also advise on on how city council will be reviewing our deliberation on the general plan and EIR? Um with or without meeting minutes? There is a a couple questions regarding not having meeting minutes before the city council meeting.
Yeah, so meeting minutes are not a requirement uh for the city council to consider um items that come before them. Um there are other that this this was a public meeting, um there's record of this meeting. Um and there is no uh reason why minutes, there's no legal requirement, I should say.
Uh but Chair Berman, um you'll you and the public will see when we publish the staff report with the agenda packet for the June 25th city council special meeting that we have included links to videos of the meetings. So the public has an opportunity as part of uh review of that package of information to also go and listen to the actual verbatim proceedings. which in many senses would be more helpful and more informative than the more abbreviated depiction of that meeting through the minutes. And so that information and those videos are already available on Pacific Coast TV's YouTube channel. But as I mentioned, we will also include direct links to those two minutes, to those two meetings rather, in the staff report for the June 25th meeting.
Okay, thank you. I, I would appreciate that. And I think city council and the public would appreciate it as well. Another question that came up. The requirements for public comment. So there is a question about some of the items that we discussed at the end of our adjourned meeting where we are deliberating on the general plan. I know throughout that long Saturday, we were working closely with Ms. Sharma. But Ms. Sharma, do you mind advising on what requires public comment after our deliberation? So is anything that we deliberated on, when we deliberated the general plan and made comments on the general plan, do, do any of those require a public comment period?
So public comment period was taken. And the, and, and that satisfies the requirement under the Brown Act. Section five four nine four nine five four point three addresses that requirement. And public comment can be taken at any time before or during commissioner deliberations and that requirement was met.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair Berman, I think there was a suggestion that there was a new map introduced following public comment. I, I don't know that that's factually correct. What we clarified was there was an unintentional omission of a map from the January 2022 public review and comment version. But that was introduced as an attachment to the June 6th planning commission staff report. And so that information was already in the record and the public had an opportunity to comment on that information. So I wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. The last question that I, that I want to reiterate from one of the commentators, and I know we did talk about it and I'm clear on it. Because we talked about it on our June 11th meeting. But can staff please just summarize the requirement for the RENA allocation and how it relates to the housing element? And how the general plan will potentially, will be updated to reflect the housing element in compliance with the RENA allocation?
Absolutely, Chair Berman. So I think there's a misconception that this general plan update must include planning for the entire regional housing needs allocation, which is one thousand eight hundred ninety-two housing units across a variety of income levels over the next eight-year planning period. When in fact, state housing element law provides for a, what they call a rezoning process, following adoption of the housing element. And so while it's fine and, and, you know, if it's possible, a local agency can plan for the entire housing element in advance of adopting the housing element, it's not a legal requirement. And in fact, the law is set up such that cities that don't have sufficient capacity in their general plan can make those changes to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation subsequent to the housing element adoption. And so given where we are at this late stage in the general plan update, it's more sensible to conclude the general plan update process without planning for the RENA in the land use element because of all the other beneficial aspects of the general plan update, which I've articulated previously, including new hazard information, new policies that emphasize infill redevelopment and protect open space and hillsides, for instance. And so having updated information based on a 2022 general plan to accommodate, you know, more than a thousand more housing units is probably the better place to be than relying on a nineteen eighty general plan for that purpose. And so that's why we're, we're recommending that the city council adopt the general plan update and then undertake a very focused housing element update process.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have clarification questions regarding the oral communications? Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you, Chair Berman. I did want to ask Ms. Sharma if there was something that was done tonight where public comment wasn't taken at the correct time. And if so, do we need to take public comment again or reopen a public comment? I just want clarification on that, if you please.
Oh, as I explained before, a public comment just needs to be taken at some point before an action is taken. So that was also done for the site, for the item that was referenced.
Okay. I really appreciate the clarification.
Anyone else have questions for staff? All right, seeing no hands, I'll move on to new public hearings. So the first item on the agenda is file number two zero two two dash zero one five coastal development permit CDP four four zero dash two two to install a wireless detection system module onto an existing structure within the state route one right of way at the northeastern corner of state route one intersection with Rena Del Mar Avenue and direction of one variable message sign and associated improvements within state route, sorry, state route one right of way immediately west of an undeveloped property assessor parcel number zero one eight one four zero seven zero zero in Pacifica as part of Caltrans State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvement Project. Recommended SEQA action is consider the State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvements Project at post miles four SM one dash two six four three to four forty-seven point two. Initial study with negative declaration, SCH number two zero two zero zero eight zero two two nine prepared by Caltrans District Four. And recommended action is approve as conditioned. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, one moment. Good evening, planning commissioners. I am Senior Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans, has proposed to implement the State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvement Project to improve traffic operations and public safety system performance and minimize the duration and impacts of non-recurring congestion due to incidents and roadway and tunnel closures along State Route One in San Mateo County. The overall project includes various improvements at ten locations along the State Route One between Half Moon Bay and Daly City in San Mateo County. The Caltrans State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvement Project includes two proposed locations along State Route One in Pacifica. The proposed development at the two locations within the city of Pacifica is the scope of the project being considered for the coastal development permit at this hearing. Location one nine dash one would occur at the northeast corner of the State Route One intersection with Rena Del Mar Avenue. Work would include installing a wireless detection system module on an existing traffic signal pole and connecting to existing power. Wireless detection systems are small wireless devices used for traffic monitoring and to detect the presence of vehicles. Location, no, excuse me, location two would occur along the eastern side of State Route One and east of the existing pedestrian path between Rena Del Mar and Fosco Avenue at post mile forty-two point three. Work would include installation of a variable message sign, which are electronic traffic signs that are used to provide motorists with real-time traffic safety and guidance information about traffic congestion and emergencies. The variable message sign would be off most of the time and would be programmed to be lighted only when needed. Work would also include installation of a Midwest guard rail system along the northbound shoulder to protect the traveling public from colliding with fixed objects in the right of way, such as the variable message sign and associated infrastructure. Work would also include trenching and pull, trenching and pull boxes to supply power to the variable message sign from an existing electrical pole. Installation of a new controller cabinet and service cabinet. And the existing green mileage sign, which details the distance to Daly City in San Francisco, will be removed and a new green mileage sign would be installed approximately two hundred feet north from the existing sign location. As detailed in the staff report, only one finding is applicable to this California, or to this coastal development permit. Staff analyzed and recommends support for the finding that the project is in conformity with the local coastal program. Additionally, Caltrans was identified as the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act for the broader State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvement Project. Caltrans prepared and adopted an initial study with a negative declaration, or ISND, in May twenty twenty-one. Due to the city's role in considering a discretionary permit for subcomponents of the State Route One Traffic Operations System Improvement Project, Pacifica is acting as a responsible agency under the California Environmental Quality Act. As a responsible agency for this project, the city must consider the environmental document prepared by the lead agency and reach its own conclusions on whether and how to approve the project involved. As further discussed in the staff report, staff finds that the adopted ISND is adequate for the purposes of SEQA for the project. After publication of the agenda, staff received a comment letter from the public on this item. The comment letter is from the applicant of the proposed Pacifica Highlands Project, which is a development application for a forty-nine unit residential development located just east of location nine dash two of the subject project. The commenter has concerns that the proposed guard rail and variable message sign at post mile forty-two point three will impact the views of motorists as they approach the access improvements for the Pacifica Highlands Project and create a potential safety issue. Although the city does not have jurisdiction within the Caltrans right of way, city staff did identify for Caltrans staff early in their coastal development permit process and encouraged Caltrans staff to review the relationship between location nine dash two and the proposed ingress and egress for the Pacifica Highlands Project. Caltrans staff informed city staff that there is no current encroachment permit application for the ingress and egress for the Pacifica Highlands Project on file. The project as conditioned would, as conditioned, would meet the necessary finding for the approval of coastal development permit and would support Caltrans' goal to improve the safety and mobility of State Route One in San Mateo County. For all the reasons provided in the staff report, staff supports approval of the project as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner Connor. Does anyone on the commission have questions for staff? And actually, before we get into questions, Ms. O'Connor, will someone from Caltrans District Four be the applicant? And do they have a presentation?
We do have staff from Caltrans District Four and they will be available to provide a applicant presentation. I think we just need to get them over.
Yeah, Chair Berman, I will promote the Caltrans applicant representatives once the commission shifts to the public hearing portion of this item.
Okay. I guess we'll start with questions for staff. Commissioner Domrat?
Just a question for clarification. This, what we're looking at today is only for nine dash one and nine dash two. We're not looking at any of the others that are within the area of Pacifica. Is that correct?
That is correct. Caltrans will be required to get any necessary permits for the other locations that are within the coastal zone outside of the jurisdiction of Pacifica's local coastal program.
And we're, we're not really questioning the location. The location is pretty much set by Caltrans. Is that correct?
The city of Pacifica does not have jurisdiction over that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions about the, the comment letter. You just read into the record, Ms. O'Connor. I believe that the, this commission has not seen any sort of application or heard anything on the project that was referenced. Is that correct?
That's correct. This application, the Pacifica Highlands application that I referenced in my presentation has not been presented to the planning commission at this time.
Has it been deemed complete?
The application has been deemed complete. We are at the beginning phases of the environmental review process.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Godwin.
Thank you. During the general plan review, I believe it was Mr. Tan, it indicated that roundabouts were vastly preferable to other changes to intersections. Is there a reason why the roundabout wasn't considered here? As opposed to using some sort of traffic management system and a sign?
I think I can allow the applicant to maybe give you a full response to that. The project, as I understand it, is just technology improvements along the state right of way and not so much infrastructure improvements to meet those requirements. But I also encourage you to talk to the applicant if, for more information.
Right. And Commissioner Godwin, as was mentioned in the staff presentation, it was intended for non-recurring traffic congestion. Whereas the roundabout solution would be, in my opinion, a roadway improvement to address recurring congestion. And so I think the goals of the projects would be quite different.
Right. But roundabouts are inherently safer. It's been shown that where they've been implemented. There's a number of reasons why they're a technologically superior solution. And I, I personally would need to know why the, we're going with a less desirable solution. There might be some great reasons like lack of land or something that make, make this solution better in this circumstance. But in general, I think Mr. Tan's point was, was good that roundabouts are a modern way of dealing with intersections opposed to the nineteenth century stoplight. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Yes, I was looking for some staff clarification on, was there any consideration given to the highest and best use of ingress and egress for that lot where they're talking about doing that construction? Would their view of oncoming traffic be obstructed by this sign when I looked at the mock-up that was relatively low? Additionally, in the event that they do apply for a permit for ingress and egress, will they be required to bear the burden of any expense of removing the guard rail for the portion that they're discussing and relocating of this? Has there been any kind of work together with them to try to meet both needs before we do this?
Yeah, I can answer that, partially answer that question. But again, I, I think I would encourage you to maybe ask the applicant that question as they have the authority within the Caltrans right of way. But from city staff's preliminary review using standard site, site triangles for the design speed of the highway, we do believe that there could be a a conflict between the variable message sign and/or the guard rail with the proposed ingress egress location. But we have not done that full analysis. And that analysis would be done as part of the Pacifica Highlands Project. At the first phase would be in the environmental review stage to see if there is any traffic design hazards with their proposed ingress and egress location. But I will let the applicant speak to any other considerations that they made in terms of conflicting. And sorry, one other point that I would like to just repeat for the record is Caltrans has made it clear to us that they don't have a encroachment permit application on file, a current one for an ingress and egress spot or application for ingress or egress for that project in their file. So just wanted to repeat that point.
Commissioner Lille.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a, hopefully a quick question for city staff.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a, hopefully a quick question for city staff. What was the date that the letter was sent from the City of Pacifica Planning Director to Caltrans in response to the documentation? The comment letter? That's referenced in the negative declaration for initial study.
Oh, the date that we commented on the initial study negative declaration. I don't have that date at hand. I can see if I can find it in our records. The applicant may also be able to respond to that question.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
And most of my questions are for the applicant, but I do have one new question, just piggybacking off of one of the other commissioners. Typically, the City of Pacifica, before applicants apply for a building permit, so while applicants are in the entitlements phase, does Pacifica typically allow the applicant to apply for an encroachment permit with Caltrans? Or does the City of Pacifica typically require the applicant to wait until planning approval, so entitlements, and then in parallel with the building permit phases when they can do their Caltrans encroachment permit?
I would say that city staff has encouraged early and early consultation with Caltrans and encouraged them to create progress on their encroachment permit to the State Route One into the State Route One right-of-way. Because we would want to make sure that the design for the ingress and egress is in line with the design for the portion of the project that is under our jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you. Any other clarification questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Commissioner Domarat?
I guess to piggyback on that, is there any knowledge of the proposed ingress and egress? And are there options to where that would be post-development and construction of these signs? In other words, are there other options where those can be moved in order to accommodate those signs? Do we have a concept of where other places they can locate ingress and egress? Are they completely locked into where the sign will be?
I think that will probably be best answered by the applicant.
Okay.
Commissioner Wright.
Is there a possibility of of a different location for the ingress and egress that wouldn't be obstructed? Is that even possible?
Similar to Commissioner Domarat's question, it sounds pretty similar. I would encourage you to ask the applicant about that feasibility.
Chair Berman, if you would allow, I'd like to answer Commissioner Lille's question about the transmittal of the city's comment letter.
Yes, please.
So the city sent the comment letter on October 7, 2020.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. Can we please hear from the applicant? Per typical, the applicant has 10 minutes, but they can reserve three minutes for rebuttal after the public comment period if desired.
And Chair Berman, there are several team participants from the applicant, so it'll take a moment to have me promote all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Nandini Sridhar. I'm the project manager from Caltrans. I'm sorry, I'm struggling with my laptop and the iPad trying to get on Zoom meetings. But I'm here with our project team and we have a few members from various units in Caltrans, design, environmental, traffic operations systems, and landscape architecture. And we are here to sort of answer questions from the commissioners. And we weren't exactly planning to make a complete presentation and provide a full overview of the project because Bonnie's done such a great job. So I've been listening to questions coming from the commissioners. If you'd like, we can use the 10 minutes to address some of them. Would that be okay?
Yeah, naturally, it's perfectly acceptable that you don't have a presentation and we can actually just bring it straight back to the commission for the commission to ask your team questions.
Chair Berman, could we pause for a moment? I have not successfully promoted all of the Caltrans project team. Ms. Sridhar, your project team members, they will need to accept my promotion invitation. And so for Chris Paddock and Nina Hoffmacher, you should see a pop-up asking whether you want to join as a panelist. And please accept that.
I can go through the names of the team members and maybe you can send it to all of them. We have Nina Hoffmacher and Zachary Gifford from environmental planning. From design, we should have Abdul Dagani. He was trying to join in. Traffic operations systems, David Mann is representing them. Lester Lee is another member of our team. Landscape architecture, of course, it's Chris Paddock.
So of those individuals, the only one I have not seen as a participant is Abdul Dagani. But everyone else I've invited to be promoted and it looks like they've all accepted at this point.
That's good. So as you, we do have some PowerPoint slides. We can provide visuals when the commissioners ask us questions and we will try to answer as best as we can at this time.
Thank you. Then I'll bring it back to the commission to ask questions of your team. I'll kick it off with one of my questions. Understanding that, you know, multiple things are happening at the same time here and that the commission, although we have not received an application for the new development that's supposed to go on the location where the nine dash two sign will go, I'm wondering, is it possible to use a variable message sign that's on a trailer that allows it to be a little less permanent? And it could be located in this location for the time necessary, but then, you know, once the ingress egress with the new development kind of gets permitted and is underway, they're going to apply for an encroachment permit that the stopping site distance can be coordinated with a final location for the variable message sign. Is that a possibility to make the variable message sign a trailer sign?
Not really. That defeats the purpose of this project. The purpose of this project is to provide a messaging system along the route that's currently lacking. And as a result, this project proposes five variable message signs along the route along a 20-mile stretch, all the way from Half Moon Bay in the south to Daly City in the north. And these are strategically located. I will ask David Mann eventually to add to this and these are strategically positioned. And the reason we are trying to install these VMS signs is because Highway One is a two-lane highway and there have been, you know, several incidents that need require a messaging system to be able to alleviate congestion when it does happen. So having these signs installed at this time is optimal because again, when there's a traffic congestion, getting our maintenance to get out there and install portable message signs is not an option. The entire purpose of this project is to have this coordinated messaging system that connects with our traffic management center in Oakland. And we're able to monitor traffic, monitor incidents in the tunnel as well as along the 20-mile stretch and messages can be sent to the TMC and relayed back to these screens. And the traveling public is, you know, notified of any, all of these emergency incidents that could likely occur along the route. So David, would you like to add something to this?
Sure. Good morning. Good evening. David Mann. I'm actually the statewide, Acting Statewide Traffic Operations Director. I was working here in the Bay Area. And I think the question is, you know, could it be used as portable changeable message signs in the short term? I think while anything is feasible, it doesn't make sense from a security standpoint, from a reliability standpoint, and also functionality standpoint for the installation of these signs. In terms of the, because of this type of facility and information that we would like to present, that the changeable message signs or the portable changeable message signs out there would likely not be the appropriate measure. The other thing that we're concerned about with portable signs, they tend to be vandalized and stolen. And that's something that the permanent signs tend to be a little bit more resilient to that. The other thing to mention is that as this new development is, you know, currently in the environmental phase, to us, it's not even a project. I know they're still working through the process. But as they work through the design, that's something that they can work with Caltrans to potentially make some small adjustments at that site to make the site distance a little bit more feasible. Given its current proposed location, we don't believe it's a significant issue. There's likely some right-of-way there that we can make some adjustments to either move it closer to the roadway or further from the roadway, depending on certain safety parameters. And I think that's something that is relatively very low cost that can be done at the time of the project. But for the sake of the public and the reliability that we're looking for and the functionality, that's something that we would not recommend to use portables at this point.
So David, just a follow-up clarification question. Are you suggesting that when you mentioned you could shift the permanent location a couple feet, are you suggesting that you work with the applicant of this separate project before the initial installation? Or are you suggesting that you install it where you want right now and then in the future the applicant can apply for Caltrans to relocate it a couple feet?
Right. So it's be a two-phase approach. Initially, obviously, we want to partner with the local community and local developer in the city to find the ideal situation at the very, at the tail end of the design phase, which we're at right now. But we're also during construction as part of the site evaluation and engineering, we can make further adjustments. And I think that's something that we would definitely, we'd like to work with the city or the county on so that we can minimize the relocations in the future. However, if the project does, the housing development does come to fruition in the future, that's something that we would ask the housing development, the development to participate in the cost of relocation. And once again, I'm telling the, my initial sense is that the relocation would be, would cost be very limited just because of the type of sign and the way we're installing it. So it's not a significant rework if we do need to move it. But I think the first approach would be try to mitigate all, mitigate the visual impacts initially and work with, work with the team. So that would be our recommended approach at this time.
So work with city staff to try to locate the facilities to be as minimally impacted.
Correct. We'll make sure that we try to find the appropriate offset for both the site distance and also for, make sure that we still have the visibility for the traveling public. You know, provided that we have the proper right-of-way, right? We do not have the time to take any right-of-way. And also any other environmental factors that our environmental team can provide to us.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions for now. Vice Chair Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I appreciate the the application and the work that's been done. I was wondering if the applicant, and if not, I will ask staff as if the next possible juncture, but I'm wondering if the applicant has an exhibit showing the location of the sign that better helps us understand Caltrans' right-of-way versus the property lines of the adjacent property owner. I think that would be really helpful to see. And the second, the second question I had, and again, this may be back to staff, was I believe your negative declaration was completed in early 2021 and I wanted to get a sense if we knew when the application that was deemed complete was indeed deemed complete. I'd like to understand the chronology of both things, please.
Yes, I can help with both of those items. So let me get my screen on. Commissioner Hauser, hopefully this is what you are asking for. Is this exhibit here? This shows a comparison of the two projects. This on the right being the Caltrans proposal. The blue line, the, the royal blue lines are property lines of the that separates the Caltrans right-of-way from real property. And then the project as shown and described in the staff report is detailed here. And then on the left is the most recent plans for the Pacifica Highlands project and they're shown ingress and egress locations. You'll note the drainage landmarks, which I highlighted with green arrows on both sites to kind of give you an idea of the reference points and the walkway that is detailed on both pictures, kind of coming in together. So this gives you an idea of the, the relationship between the two projects.
Ms. O'Connor, this is an incredibly helpful graphic. Thank you for walking us through it. I think what I, what I was also looking for was the north and southmost, probably the true north and true southmost property lines to understand the frontage of the other, of the adjacent property. And then just one more piggyback question on that. The road that was shown in that graphic on the left of the project that's proposed, again, recognizing that that's not a project that this commission has even considered or heard of. But that's a new road that's being proposed and it's not an existing road or an existing curb cut off of Highway One. Is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, that is correct. So let me share my screen again. And
Chair Berman, if you would allow, while Ms. O'Connor is getting the graphic ready, I do need to clarify a statement I made earlier. There were actually two comment letters sent by the city. I believe Commissioner Lille may have been inquiring about the later of the two. And so the city's initial comment letter was sent on the date that I indicated, but the one that's included in the ISMD that may be, or the negative declaration, rather, prepared by Caltrans was actually conveyed in April of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Hauser, so here we have an overview. I'm hoping that the details are being seen on your side of the screen.
They are. Thank you.
The pink lines show the property lines, the right-of-way. And then again, for a reference point here, are those the double drainage points right here to kind of get you aligned with where we're looking at.
And are the grade contours pretty similar? I believe the entry that was shown in that graphic you showed was to the right of your cursor. Is that right?
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
Where was the entry? In the image that you showed with the side-by-side comparison where the new curb cut would be? If you could call it a curb cut, there's not really a curb there. Where, where is the new the new access in comparison with your cursor?
Okay, so the proposed ingress and egress for the Pacifica Highlands project would start about approximately 70 feet north of these, this double drainage point. I think it's closer to 67 feet, but so approximately 67 feet north of this double drainage, which is approximately there.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then as far as the clarification on the date that that application was deemed complete, was it before or after the, the date of the published negative declaration, which if I am not mistaken, had a state clearinghouse number associated with it. So I believe that this was made available to the public. So I love clarif-, I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot of compound questions. Was this made, was the negative declaration made available publicly? And what was the date that the application from the project applicant was deemed complete?
So the ISMND was, was adopted in May 2021. The application for the Pacifica Highlands project was deemed complete by the City of Pacifica in May 9th, 2022.
That's all my questions for now. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Wright.
Thank you for getting to a lot of my questions already. So am I correct in assuming that the guardrail that's being put up is going to interfere with the proposed ingress and egress?
Commissioner Godwin, can you clarify who you're asking?
You, Bunny.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wright. I'm sorry. So we have not done that full analysis yet. Like I said earlier, I've, the engineer, our engineering department has provided us with standard site distance triangles for the design speed of Highway One. And based on a preliminary review, we, we do think that there's the potential that there would be a conflict between the proposed ingress egress design and the location of all the facilities being considered tonight. But we have not done a formal analysis on that.
Okay. And then for, for Mr. Mann, is the height of, of that sign sufficient? Or the setback of that sign sufficient that if someone was to be leaving the property where the proposed development is going to be, that they would still be able to see oncoming traffic before trying to merge onto the highway?
So in general, I think it's not necessarily the height of, height of the sign, but it's also the distance from the edge of the roadway potentially that could impact their visibility of oncoming traffic. We could also, Caltrans can work with our team members to look at also at the height of the sign if necessary. You know, typically the sign itself actually would be at least seven feet off, off the ground for distance for drivers to observe it, but also to, you know, obviously to minimize the likelihood of minor vandalism.
And would you be willing to commit to try to at least reach out to the butter? And see if you can in, make in the field adjustments that would accomplish, accomplish both of you working together to both get what you need?
So I think given where we're at today, I think that the appropriate things that we can commit to work to, with the city on this, or the county, depending on who, the jurisdiction here, to, you know, try to find the, the appropriate distance from the edge of the travel way to make, to minimize the potential impacts if the potential access to the state highway is built. And, you know, we're still quite away from that point. So it would be a little bit early for us to commit exactly what we would want to do, but I think we can commit to work with the local staff.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lille.
Thank you. I think a lot of our questions have been around 92. And I know we also have 91 project on the, on the agenda. I just had a question for Caltrans staff around if there's any, my understanding is there are two independent technology improvements along Highway One. There's no, is there any dependency between the two, communication between the two in terms of location that would warrant their location?
So the, the two elements that were proposed within the city limits, as of today, there are, it is not directly tied to each other. One, one element that I'll talk specifically of, on the existing traffic signal structure, that is, that is a performance measuring system, measuring system for our transportation management center to have a better understanding of the number of vehicles using the facility on a day-to-day basis, but also to improve our long-term traffic engineering and planning studies as well. That system could provide information to the message sign. But given where we're at in today's technology and different, in the way that we, you know, get information from, you know, various third-party providers, we're likely not going to connect the two elements together as of today.
Okay.
Hopefully that answers your question. However, all that information is both fed to our data centers in the city, at the city of Oakland.
It does, yeah. And I was really getting to the intent, in terms of the proximity of them and whether they need to be a certain distance from one another to communicate. It sounds like that technology is not there yet. So that's not a consideration really at this time. My other question was, were any other signs for the, for 92, sorry, were any other locations for 92 reviewed? And in particular, locations I'm thinking of are closer to post mile 42.8 or post mile 43, a little further north on the same side. That may serve as the same intent to, to the public in terms of potentially redirecting traffic. If there is a traffic issue on Highway One, or I assume Sharp Park Road ahead of them. Were there any other locations reviewed for the sign, the current location, other than the one that was modified already? Kind of similar proximity?
Actually, before, yeah, that's, that's a good question. I think Zach, if you're on the line, I don't, I don't recall it because I don't want to misspeak about the number of locations within the city that we've looked at specifically. But maybe Zach, you can take, provide an answer of how many locations we took a look within the city limits.
Yeah, I guess you just really just mentioned, besides the other one that you said, closer to the church. Is that, was that your question? I'm trying to get to the gist of your question other than the. Okay.
Yeah, Zach, I just typed the other one that was kind of already revised.
Right, right, right. I got you. Early on in the early development of, of the project, we did briefly look at a sign north of Rena Del Mar. But due to environmental factors, site distances, and other complications, it was found to move back further south along Highway One to be a better location for the data collection for the sign and also for the emergency and incident-related messaging.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Godwin. Oh, you're still on me, Commissioner Godwin.
Thank you for mentioning that. To follow on Commissioner Lille's point, does the sign have to be the size as initially proposed? Can it be smaller? Should it be larger? Could it be moved further up the hill? Could it be moved further south? It just seems like the traffic sensor Rena Del Mar has got to go where it's at the intersection. But the, the sign is, you have somewhat flexibility with that. So why not relocate it somewhere else away from this proposed developments access or egress point? Can you talk a little bit about that as possibilities?
Okay, I'll start off. I think one, the one thing about size, the size that we're proposing is appropriate for the context that we have on this type of highway system based on the speeds that we're traveling. Ideally, the sign would be a little bit larger. But due to concerns about, you know, visual impacts, the, the ability to install the sign, we've, we tried to find a sign that we could fit the most urgent messages that we could display. So that's, that's, that's why we've come up to sign. It really can't get much smaller because it'd be very challenging to read at 55, 60 miles an hour. So we are already, we're pushing the boundaries there. We're also trying to find, trying to be consistent across the coast and the coastal area about the size of signs as well. So we want to find something that is reasonable, but also allow us to provide the necessary information. The second thing about location, I think Zach already covered it. There was just a number of constraints that we're faced in terms of environmental factors, and I think Zach can add more there. The one area that, like I said, I mentioned earlier, that we can make some slight adjustments in the field at the, when we start doing the actual construction, is that we can potentially move the sign just make potentially, and this is something that we have to do site verify a little further off the edge of the, closer, closer to, excuse me, away from the roadway to make it easier for drivers to come out of that potential future driveway. But in terms of, you know, significant relocation, I think that's a little bit too late in the process, given all the constraints that we have right now.
Zach, did you want to add anything?
Sure. As far as that other location, there were constraints there with a large amount of vegetation that possibly needed to be removed in that area and, and biological constraints there that were significant. I don't want to say significant because I don't want to get into a sequoia discussion here about significance. But significant enough for us to review moving it to different locations that were less impactful to the environment.
Okay, nice. Understand your position. Next question. I know my navigation system already gives me a lot of alerts about traffic. Is this whole concept of the sign somewhat obsolescent or even approaching obsolete? Is, is there any real need to even do this sign at all that's going to impact a large number of drivers?
So Commissioner, that's a great question. I get that all the time. You know, statewide is, is now, in my current role as the statewide, not statewide traffic operations manager. I, we do agree that we're definitely evolving to use these in-vehicle tools in your phone apps. The Department of Transportation is definitely looking at ways to display that information in your vehicles. However, there's two factors I want to bring up. One, A, the use of cell phones while driving remains illegal in California. And that's something that our partners at CHP and our local PD take very seriously. Distracted driving is something that we do not want to encourage, number one. Number two, from an equity perspective, it's going to take quite a bit of time for our fleet to turn over. There's a lot of drivers from varying age groups, from ethnicities, I mean, potentially many that are coming from out of area that don't have access to these apps potentially safely within their vehicle. I certainly agree with you that they are becoming more commonplace, but our goal is to reach all the, all traveling public members. And that's where this sign will provide that service. Now, I agree with you, potentially in upwards of a decade or two decades, when we have that fleet conversion and driver conversion, I definitely think that projects like this and what we're doing will be less and less in the future.
I guess my last question is, you know, stoplights and trying to manage them as a 19th century technology. Roundabouts have been shown to be a lot safer. You know, people don't, don't try to beat roundabouts the way they do stoplights and end up killing themselves or killing somebody else. Did you think seriously about redesigning the intersection to something that's safer than what we've used since the 1950s?
That's a great comment. I did hear a comment about roundabouts in the past. I think as a department, anytime that we have an opportunity to upgrade an intersection or add an intersection, roundabouts is a considered alternative. It is a mandatory evaluation that we must complete as part of the project development process. And in many cases now, the department is installing roundabouts in many different areas. And here in the Bay Area, while it doesn't seem that we're doing a lot, there are actually quite a bit of planned and planned roundabouts and also some in construction. Now, the challenges with roundabouts are that, A, they do potentially require more land and real estate to support such a large facility, such as where we are at, looking at in Highway One. There's all, you know, so a lot of areas that may not be viable for a roundabout, given the approach fees that we have. The second thing I want to add is that this particular project was construed as mainly an information project. Traveler information to the public, emergency management, and any modifications to the intersection, capacity modifications to intersection were completely out of scope and not considered as part of the process. So the funding was dedicated to, to electronics and trying to, to better communicate to the drivers and address some of the major concerns that we've been facing along the Highway One corridor. But I think your question is really something that speaks to what the department is moving forward with, is to looking at a more safe systems approach and integrating more of this more modern intersection design to promote safety and efficiency. So don't be surprised that future projects that may modify an intersection. And this is something that, you know, the city of the Pacifica, they do hypothetically propose a new traffic signal. Let's say on state, state Route One, they will be required to do a roundabout analysis and consider that, whether it's feasible or not. And that process will play itself out at that time.
Maybe it'd be worthwhile to change the perspective on the project from the fairly narrow one you have now to a broader one. I guess I'm finished with the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Before I move on to Commissioner Lille, and while we're going back for seconds, I'm going to slip in two questions really quick. So one question is for staff. Understanding that the Pacifica Highlands project has been deemed complete, would this new installation by Caltrans then impact the completeness of that project? Understanding that it may impact the stopping site distance for the ingress egress of that project?
It wouldn't change the completeness status of the project. It will be something that we will definitely continue to reach out and get information from the applicant on to address. So we're still early in the phase of that project and are, would be able to address it as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. My second question is for David. So you did clarify for one of the commissioners earlier that there's no interconnect from this variable message sign to the traffic signal at Rena Del Mar, and that there isn't a requirement based on distance between that intersection and this variable message sign? With that said, and understanding that there's great limitations for the driveway of a property at this stretch of road, because the queue length at Rena Del Mar is actually quite long. I'm sure the level of service of this intersection can kind of prove that too. And the gaps here are going to be pretty short with this future development. So with all that said, is there a possibility to move this variable message sign further north? Understanding and, you know, reviewing the report of all the development for these signs that are going to go up and down the coast in our area, in the District Four area, I mean, a couple, like a couple hundred feet, I can't imagine would impact the effectiveness of this variable message sign. Is it possible to locate the sign further north?
Let me start with that, and I can bring the team in to help answer that. I think that's a good point, that these types of signs, specific to the verbal message signs, there is a little, small flexibility to move them, but we do have a number of factors that we consider, right? From the amount of time that the drivers are able to read and comprehend the messages that we are displaying at the speeds that they're traveling, number one. Number two, there's also the potential, you know, additional light into other areas that we don't want them, the light to be going from the signs. While the signs do adjust for the ambient conditions, they try to be as dim as possible. We also are taking that into consideration. But in terms of where we're at today, I feel that it is, would be very challenging potentially to move it a couple hundred feet hypothetically. We know the current process that we have, we've relooked at the clearances from an environmental standpoint that we would not have the impacts at this location. But I think that's something that we could take back to the team and see what, what adjustments that we can make. But that's something that it would be very difficult for us to commit to. But that's something that it would be very difficult for us to commit to. I don't know if anybody else in my team wants to speak in terms of the impacts to our, you know, environmental clearances and other factors out there, but. I think that would be something that would be a challenging ask. I think given where we're at today and given the distance from the driveway and how much right away, I think that's, I think it would be a little bit less. Of an issue, I think we can definitely work with the city in terms of getting the offset correct to minimize the impacts. To potentially that future driveway if it is constructed. And I see hand up, is there, did Nina or Zach, did you raise your hand there? No?
No, I didn't, but I can chime in a little bit. Sorry, did I cut somebody off?
No, this is Anthony. I was about to say something, but go ahead. Yeah, can you hear me all right? Okay. I just wanted to clarify something. It is our understanding that the housing development still does not have environmental clearance. Is that correct?
Chair Berman, yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. That, yes, that is correct. The that application has not gone through. The California Environmental Quality Act process yet.
Yes, so I think while I agree with David that we are willing to work with the local. With the staff from the city and county. Our project has gone through various iterations. We've moved the sign many times and every time we move it. We've had to clear it environmentally. So. At this point, I agree with David, we can move it a few feet to the left or right or north or south. But moving it 200 to 300 feet, like Zach mentioned, there are environmental constraints. We've encountered archaeological resources, so it, you know, we've spent a lot of staff time and resources. Trying to position the sign where it is. So while we can investigate, you know, trying to move it again, but that would again be a setback to our project. For Caltrans's project to be able to, you know, come up with a new location for the VMS sign. That said. The developer for the housing development, you know, could potentially investigate some mitigation measures. For the site distance issue that they have cited cited. So. I think they need to investigate that and get the project cleared environmentally. They're three or four years away. And they do need an encroachment permit from Caltrans, so I think all of those issues need to be resolved. Before requesting Caltrans to adjust the location of this sign at this point. We can look at it, look into it, but I, like David mentioned, it would be very difficult to commit to that.
Thank you. And and just one final item, I do recognize that this planning commission has not received. The housing development as an item to review and approve, but what this commission has recently done is. We spent about 30 minutes talking about this particular property and and making it suitable for housing with our general plan. And and regardless of where the driveway is for this location, I'm wondering. Given that this whole stretch of road will is allocated for mixed use neighborhood. So a good amount of residential, I feel like it would be beneficial. Even for the people living here to have this sign further north, so when they turn right on Highway one. They can benefit from the sign as well. So I'm just trying especially to consider. You know, good planning, given we're planning commission. But yeah, those are all my questions right now.
That's a great point. However, you know, we. Did consider these, like I mentioned earlier, the signs are located. Strategically to allow the traveling public to make decisions in a timely manner. So I will defer to David to talk about how this sign was located or Zach, actually. Zach or Lester, if they are there, because again, this was. Based on that idea. That, you know, it would allow motorists to make a timely decision to get off of the highway or onto the highway. So. Zach, Lester. Do you have anything?
I'll let Lester, David capture that. They're more professional about the placement of signs.
Yeah, let me just add that, you know, we, well, we wanted to capture for the entire community, you know, like I said, we've had, we were trying to. Also provide enough warning in advance of decision points to allow drivers to. Take some alternatives, given potentially issues that they may face ahead. So that's been one of the major factors in determining that. So trying to balance the capturing as much of the traffic as we can. But and also at the same time, providing enough advanced warning for them to comprehend the information. And think about some of the alternatives that they could take as they head north, northbound on Highway one. You know, in an ideal world, we'd like to install additional signs, and that's something that the department would definitely consider in the future. As part of our larger build out plan, but this, you know, with Caltrans, this was very dedicated funding for. A handful of signs at the time, so we tried to best strategically place them along the entire Highway one corridor to provide, you know, maximum. Audiences and also help out with some of the most pressing pressing needs that we saw at the time. So that's really our main intent and driver at this point for in terms of sign selection locations. Is it is definitely, you know, I've been hearing a lot of conversation, moving the sign here and there, you're absolutely correct, moving it five feet. Doesn't really impact things significantly. But potentially moving a little bit more is actually more constrained on where we're at today. And I want to make sure to make it one more point is that, you know, funding with the way funding cycles work for transportation. This project has been delayed multiple times to try to address all the questions and concerns from the community to make it to make sure that we, throughout the entire coast. If we don't really move forward, this, we're going to lose this opportunity to really provide that emergency management. And that's something that's be very disappointing to our department, I think disappointing to many of the elected officials out there. That have been asking Caltrans to do something about incident emergency management for the Highway one corridor.
Thank you, David. You mentioned this sign needs to be located strategically before a driver needs to make a decision. Based on your analysis, which, what decision is the first decision that a driver would have to make based off of this sign? I guess was this, this sign's location is based off of a decision that needs to be made where?
So the main, the main decision point is up towards Highway one and 35, but there, there's a lot, a number of crossing roads that come between. Thirty-five and one, such as Sharp Park, so we wanted to be able to capture some of that. The other thing that we were considering as well was that. You know, we didn't want folks to get too close up towards Highway one, Highway one and 35. So there were a number of places for folks to go ahead and turn around as well and go the other way. So there's, you know, those are the couple of factors that we're looking at there.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you. I had one question and one comment. I guess my first question, or my only question is around the content on the sign. So in terms of community benefit. I think on some of these other signs we see around the Bay Area, we see notices of closures, particularly for the tunnel. Tomlantos Tunnel, and then also. My, my question is around, as you mentioned, David's Sharp Park Road. So if there's an accident on Sharp Park Road. Being able to communicate this jurisdiction of the sign and the content is not just limited to Caltrans roads, it's limited to basically any. Vehicle, any vehicular traffic on any public roadway that may impact severely traffic.
That's correct. In general, I think our signs are focused for the highway system, but there are potential events within the local jurisdiction. That may raise to the level of displaying those signs, and that's something that we can work with the San Mateo County Emergency Operations Center, the County Sheriff. And others to find the appropriate timing and display of those types of closure messages. I think the main point is that these signs are as needed basis and for mainly for incidents and special events. And potentially emergency evacuations, but I think there are opportunities to use the signs appropriately when we do have major. Potential traffic impacts on local streets, and we've done it in the past for, let's say, the city of San Francisco. And some other major cities around the Bay Area. However, we do want to caution that we want to minimize the use of these signs. To be cognizant of, you know, the dark skies approached out there on the coast. So we will, we will try to work with the, with the community, the local first responders to come up with a subset of messages. Or message scenarios that we could definitely use for that case.
Thank you. And then my comment is is around the location. I think also. I have two location comments. One is the current location, and I'll reiterate my comment from earlier in terms of. I do agree with Chair Berman that I think the the current location of the sign is is not necessarily the best location to serve most of the travelers in Pacifica. With the development aside, Reyna del Mar is a. Very busy intersection and includes a lot of traffic that actually goes into the Valmar neighborhood and then comes back out and heads north. And you're, that basically heads south, makes a left in Reyna del Mar and comes back, and that entire group of travelers will be missed. And then to reiterate my comment earlier, I do know there's Caltrans right away at post marker forty-two dot eight, which is roughly in front of the police station. And then also forty-three, which is actually a significant piece of right away. That extends into that East Fairway neighborhood. Those seem like the most appropriate locations, but I do, but as Zach mentioned earlier, it sounds like those may have been evaluated and. And there were some either sightline challenges or other environmental issues that would need to be restudied, so I do appreciate that. I just want to reiterate that comment. My second location comment is. Heading south, I think, I know it's not in this project, but Pacifica still doesn't have a. A sign like, wouldn't have a sign like this headed south in its city limits. I think close Clarinada, we don't have one, I believe Clarinada is in Davis City. And then we have the one at the tunnel as well, which I believe is outside of the city limits. So. I think most of our traffic challenges are headed south on the weekends and being able for. Travelers in that direction to adjust their travel once they hit traffic around the Manor to Sharp Park area. And take Sharp Park Road east to potentially get on two eighty or adjust their beach plans would be advantageous to the public for the next. Grant funding cycle for traffic signs in Pacifica. And thank you.
And acknowledged, thank you.
Thanks, Chair Houser.
Um, thank you, Chair. It's not really a question, but I would really love it if no one objects. I would love to do public comment at some point soon. I feel like we're starting to get into things that are less questioning, and I really appreciate knowing. Yeah, I'll stop there.
No, sounds good. Commissioner Wright, are you okay with that? I see your hand, or do you have a clarification question for the applicant that you want to ask before public comment?
I do have a couple of questions for the applicant prior to comment, but I'm also happy to hear public comment first and circle back to that.
I think you've had your hand raised for a while. I think it'd be great to hear your question.
Okay, I do understand that you want the sign a certain distance from the light because you don't want people reading and smashing into stopped. Traffic at that light that traffic backs up at. So I, I have an appreciation for. Part of the reason you want to put it there. I don't feel, however, that you did a sufficient job considering you're a butter. In his potential for ingress and egress, and I am a little bit concerned about that, but. It sounds to me as if you've committed to maximize what field adjustments you can do. Is the guardrail that's more concerning to me? And just, could you give me a rough ballpark idea? How much expense the. The butter would need to go to to remove a piece of that guardrail in order to be able to make his plan for his. Egress and ingress feasible in the event that that does come to pass three years from now?
Abdul, do you have the latest cost for a guardrail that we're using per foot?
I don't think Abdul was able to join in.
There is Abdul in the participant area. He did not accept the invitation to promote the penalty. I'll try once more.
I think he may not be familiar with this. Maybe you can try again and match him. Let me text him.
So we'll find that maybe we'll give some, it's very difficult, it's a very site specific. Question, right? But I don't, like I said, I don't believe that the cost would be significant. In terms of having to maybe potentially adjust the guardrail. But I think that's something that we would definitely, you know, once again, we would need to do that sites, site specific walkthrough in moving forward.
Okay, and then my last thing is just a very short comment. Have you considered what we call coming out of the quarry across from Valmar, making that right turn only? To cut down that light sequence 25% so that we get more cars through there and get rid of our F rating?
Could you repeat that question again? Which intersection you're talking about? Sorry about that.
The Reyna del Mar at Valmar there? Just north of where you're talking about this sign. That light, there is a light sequence coming out of what we call the quarry, the ocean side to the west. Have you considered making that right turn only in order to? Not have it have to have a light sequence? So it could do a merge lane and just go on, and that way you could get 25% more of the cars through that light by eliminating an entire light sequence.
Okay, so let me, I mean, this is not the scope of our discussion tonight, the specific intersection improvement. I think that's something that we can, I can have our traffic signal operations manager work with Sam from the city on to take a look at that. One thing I just will make a comment on, all our traffic lights are supposed to be actuated, so when there are no vehicles coming out of that. Particular movement, we do not serve that, that, that traffic movement. So actually, it is relatively very efficient. So that's just at the high level, I don't think that making that right turn only would necessarily. Yield much potential benefit in terms of the overall delay that drivers are experiencing today, but I think that's something that we could. Bring back to our traffic signal operations team and then bring it back to our traffic, to the city public works team.
Great, thank you.
All right, seeing no more hands for questions, I will open up public comment.
All right, there are some hands raised. Chair Berman, if you'll allow me a moment, I will get the timer set up and we'll get underway.
Yep, thank you.
All right, our first speaker is Dale Leta. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Hi, my name is Dale Leta. I am a project manager with BKF Engineers, and I'm calling as a representative of the Pacifica Highlands Development you've been discussing. I wanted to start by just thanking Planning Commission staff, city staff and Caltrans staff for all of their hard work on this project. We're, we're excited about it. We think it's a great improvement for the city and will enhance traffic and. Safety along the Highway one corridor. I want to start by just saying that the the current location for access to the Pacifica Highlands project. Has, there's been a lot of thought and deliberation over where it's currently located. Which we're, we will be providing to the city in a more detailed letter coming up as part of our planning resuminal, but. The short story is we looked at trying to balance the location between existing egress and ingress points for for other neighboring properties, also trying to balance. With Reyna del Mar and fastler intersections and also just looking at how we could provide access to our development. And provide the most flexible use of the remainder of the. Seven hundred parcel, which, which is this parcel adjacent the right away improvement. seven hundred parcel, which, which is this parcel adjacent, the right away improvements. With all due respect to Ms. Shadar, I, I did want to note correction or maybe just an adjustment to what she had stated. We do not have a current encroachment permit with Caltrans. That is, that is correct. But we did, you know, understanding that access to highway one is a sensitive topic in the city. It's something we wanted to get out in front of. And as part of our due diligence, we did start and apply for an encroachment permit with, with the encroachment permit office as early as March of twenty twenty-one. We did receive feedback from the encroachment team with different aspects of the geometry of the entry point, some other comments. They didn't provide any comments on, on this particular item or how it would impact our project. That first submittal, the driveway was in a, in a different location. Since that time, we've, we've resubmitted several times to the encroachment permit office with our most recent submittal and I think it was March of this year. And unfortunately, the, you know, this hasn't come up in any of those discussions. I do want to thank Caltrans staff for being open to, to working with the city and collaborating on this location. We, you know, we would love the same opportunity. If given the chance, I, I think there's room that the project entry point and the variable message sign can, you know, they can all work together. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker will be Lori C. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lori Tongo and I'm a resident of Pacifica. And therefore I have an invested interest in the look of our city. I am concerned about putting a sign, several signs on highway one and our, our scenic city. I don't want it to look like Las Vegas or, or the otherwise visually impaired. We're calling this a service to the public. So, you know, this is a natural environment area, although we have our highway going through it to gain access to the city. We really want to keep it as, as beautiful as we can. And so I, I've, I've heard a lot of questions about, well, there's cell phone technology, there's navigation. I would like to propose one more that has been around even longer, which is the radio. Uh, when I'm concerned about traffic, I turn on the radio and every day or weekend or traffic problem that is on the coast, the channel that I listen to, I won't advertise it, states it. And so I am very aware of when there are issues with the highway. And so I would propose that the money be reallocated to things like picking up trash on the highway because we're way behind on that as well. I'm not particularly concerned about disappointing Caltrans or a bunch of politicians. I'm more interested in keeping the beauty of the city. So thank you for your time and I will forfeit the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Raimi Tan. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Raimi Tan. I'm over in Manor Architect again. That Reno Del Mar intersection's been problematic. My, my kids used to go to the Valmar school when they were younger. And that actually, that right turn, you know, into the quarry was actually used as additional queuing space for parents coming from the north side of town, turning into the turning into Marina Del Mar because the queue exceeded the length of the left turn lane as well as the left turn lane cycle. So, so there's a, there's a big actually traffic problem, you know, on, on the weekdays morning. And then I've noticed the beach traffic has gone progressively worse. And I don't, I don't even go down to the south end of town from where I live in the north end on the weekends. That traffic is just awful. You know, any, anytime that the fog's lifted from the coast, you know, it's pretty unbearable. So I, I kind of questioned the, that's, that location, that sign at all because it's, it's almost to where the highway turns into a freeway and there's usually no problems. You know, going up and over, you know, the hill, you know, past Manor and up, up, up through Daly City at that junction. The traffic again, it's usually going southbound. So I would agree with the previous speaker, let's save the money and bank it towards, you know, more you know, fruitful things like maybe, you know, converting that traffic light around the Mar to a, to a traffic circle, which would be a lot safer. And then, you know, potentially the other intersections at, at Fassler, Crespi and and, and Del Mar Linamar to, to, to traffic circles. I was hoping that the money from the highway widening project that was canceled between Reno and Omar and Fassler would be, you know, going to, you know, major improvements like, like traffic circles. To eliminate all the traffic lights and make it a lot safer, you know, for cars and pedestrians. So, you know, that, that's my comment, you know, I think, you know, given the problems with that sign, you should probably just eliminate and again, bank the money. Thank you. Yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker will be Cindy Abbott. Please go ahead.
Hello, I really, this is Cindy Abbott, West Shore Park. I appreciate all the conversation that's taken place so far. And I'd like to say I agree with Commissioner Godwin that I, I think this technology is approaching obsolescence. And even in the name of equity, I, I think that most folks have a cell phone because it's an affordable way of communicating on, on many things. And they are available or the radio is another great approach. I, I spent some time over the past year listening to the same conversation take place down the coast with Half Moon Bay and the mid coast. And just like Lori C just mentioned, I, I think that Caltrans isn't quite finding the right fit for the coast side. To protect the scenic beauty of the area, to understand a somewhat rural environment. Maybe a little bit less here in Pacifica than on the other hand of the slide. But these two signs don't seem to really be providing enough value. And to make the comment that they're going to help reduce congestion, I think is really making a false argument. So I too think that this conversation maybe needs to turn into another direction and I'd suggest not approving this tonight. But continuing the conversation with our other coast siders and finding a different coast side alternative to this need. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Cliff Lawrence. Please go ahead.
Good evening again. This is Clifford Lawrence. First, I, I think to a casual observer, it's pretty obvious, at least I think so, that it's the southbound traffic that is really messed up here. That's number one. Two, I thought I heard somebody say this Pacifica Highlands thing. Application was complete. That's not what the online status says. Uh, maybe true. But I was surprised to hear that. Why are we again involved in trying to make some modifications in an area where there is an application that hasn't even been heard yet? Very similar to the Malagra on ramp, which would be near a couple of locations, future hotels that have not been heard yet. Concerned about that. And this, there, there's just something about this. I'm sorry. There's one other point. I'm sorry I lost it. But, um, I thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Christine Bowles. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Again, commissioners, this is Christine Bowles and I, I just want to, it's, it's, it's a treat to get to speak to Caltrans staff here. Thank you for being here today and, and trying to explain where you're coming from on these issues. I, I think we all know that this is an area in Pacifica that has the very worst traffic and, and I know the highway widening was originally considered for this area and, and did not go through. I, I'm really concerned that, you know, the sign here, thinking about traffic going northbound, that by the time people get to the site, like what is the point of telling them that the traffic is bad because there's no other alternate route? When they're there and, and that, and that's really the big problem in, in the southern part of Pacifica. Is, is that highway one is really the only option until you get to Sharp Park. So, so maybe you can talk a little bit about what your intention is and letting people know, is it just like, sorry, you're stuck for an hour? Maybe that helps calm people. I'm, I'm just not really sure. And then I'll just take this opportunity to ask if Caltrans has had a chance to review our general plan and all the new housing and because the, the traffic is, is really what the EIR has pointed out is, is the biggest issue in Pacifica and the city is saying that these are issues that cannot be mitigated, but there really hasn't been any study done. And I would really welcome the opportunity to, to start conversations with Caltrans on how we can add traffic circles and, and other traffic calming measures to, to really help the issue so that we can actually build more housing and commercial uses in town without you know, causing people to wait an hour in traffic all the time, especially when schools are in session or, or, you know, the very dangerous rest of us not being able to evacuate. As again, that highway one is really the only way out of in that area. And, you know, going south is all eucalyptus bars. So could be, could be very easily blocked. So we, we have major traffic issues that we would really appreciate your partnership with us and helping to solve. Thank you.
And there are no, uh, no more hands raised, Chair Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission, starting with Vice Chair Houser.
Thank you Chair. Um, you know, it's a, this is definitely an interesting question. I, I did, I have some thoughts, but I did have one more question for Caltrans. Is this a sign that's specifically traffic related? I, I was under the impression from the staff report that there were tsunami, I mean, that there was other information that was going to be provided on this sign. And I'm, I would love for you to speak to that a little bit because I want to understand, is this really for, like, what, what is this sign? David?
Sure, I can take that quickly. The primary purpose of this sign is for, for traffic incidents. However, we, there is, when there is a need, it can be also used for emergencies as well. To assist with evacuations. The net, there's, and from a national standpoint, there's, there's very limited types of information that we can put upon this line. It is actually managed by the federal government. There are very clear guidelines and manuals on that. So the, all the information is going to be traveler, traffic and emergency focused. There will not be any public service announcements. You know, not related to transportation allowed. However, there are potentially some public safety campaigns. Um, but that's something that we would not necessarily propose, given the fact that we want to be consistent with our dark skies approaching the coast. So we really want to keep it focused to as needed events that do not hurt normally happen, right? So non recurrent type events, which actually causes about fifty-five percent of the congestion typically on a, you know, nationally, national average out there. So that's actually what we're trying to focus on. I do, I do, did hear a lot of conversation about you know, recurrent congestion that the highway one quarter faces in terms of certain, during certain times of day. But really the main benefit of these signs is to, to handle non recurrent situations that do contribute up to fifty-five percent of the delay that travelers are facing.
Why, I, I appreciate that. You know, if traffic is really the primary, is really the primary goal. I mean, I, I, I don't know. So I for one do not think it's I'm gonna say appropriate. To be considering this sign in the context of a project that hasn't even come before this commission. So what I do think is appropriate is what Chair Berman mentioned, which is that there is a, a land use designation. When I was asking questions earlier about the frontage of the property that we're adjacent to, what I wanted to understand is the property as a whole, whatever it turns out to be. You know, are we looking at something here tonight that could really make it difficult for a property owner to use their property? And so that's, that's something that I am concerned with, but I think my bigger concern comes more from, from the things that the public brought up. For that. You know, I, I'm not sure if the aesthetics are something that really fits into this area. It's a specific area. I'm not sure that it's, you know, someone, one of the members of the public mentioned that by the time you get to this point, there's really not much to do. When you see it, like I, I don't, I kind of, I, I concur with that. So if it's really not about the safety component, if it's not like an urgent, hey, there's a tsunami or, or something like that, I don't know if I can get there personally, but I would love to hear what everybody else has to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Domra.
I wasn't concerned until the last five minutes. In other words, I'm, I'm very concerned that enough of the real type of information won't be displayed. And I concur with what everybody says, by the time you get there, if it's, if, if there's congestion, you don't need to know it, you could see it. I'm, I'm very concerned that there isn't emergency information like amber alerts, tsunami warnings, maybe local kinds of, of emergencies on this sign. If, and, and that's the real information you need. I'm not as concerned about the aesthetics because I think the importance of tsunamis and amber alerts would outweigh that. But if that's not going to be provided, I, I don't see much need to these signs. I do see a lot of need for Caltrans to work with the community and do some kind of additional transportation studies to see how we can modify that area. You know, with the light. And I know that's not part of the discussion. I know that's not part of, of, of what you're all about here. So, um, so I do have that, that concern that, that the information, you know, really isn't going to be all that useful to, to very many people at this point. So now what the state needs to do, they need to mandate that auto manufacturers mandate heads up displays where this information is displayed on your windshield as you're driving as you come into an area. I think a lot can be done with technology that's there already and maybe we'll get there someday also, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Aliel.
If it, if the chair is willing, I'm, I'm happy to allow for either David or other Caltrans staff to clarify any points that were just mentioned. It looks like they may have some clarifies, clarifying points around the, maybe the content on the sign or some other points and I'll make my comment if that's okay with the chair.
Yes, yes, definitely. Please.
So thanks. I, I think there's a little misunderstanding what's allowed and what's not allowed on this one. I think what I was trying to initially let everybody know is that we would like to take a very cautious approach in displaying the messages that we have out there due to, to the number of concerns that we've, we've been received from the folks that live on the coast side. However, what's on the table for the sign to be used is very clear. A traffic incidents when they do happen. And not necessarily just to let people know there are congestion. We actually want to use the sign to let them know to slow down to avoid secondary accidents. And that's actually one of the pillars that we have here at the department is to warn folks at the end of queue. So that's something that we would definitely use it for. Secondly, we would also use, look to use the sign to alert folks to, to that, but potential closures and incidents in the highway one thirty-five area on two eighty is because that's where a lot of the travelers are going, right? So we do potentially want to let, alert them of those situations as well. In addition to that, um, we know the coast weather, coastal weather environment is rapidly changing. There's a lot of things there. Those are off, potentially options on the table. When we have significant rain events, when we have fog, these signs can be used and there are many examples of them being used all over California. And there are many examples of them being used all over California for those specific situations. Additionally, as well, when emergency evacuations, tsunamis, amber alerts, those are all transportation traveler information allowed. So those are all definitely on the table. What I meant earlier is that we want to work with the, you know, our emergency responders in the cities to find the right balance so that we don't have the signs on continuously, but we would have them on when they're appropriate as, for the situation that we have at hand. So I, I think, I think to make sure that the signs would be used for all those types of scenarios, but we want to be judicious in their use to make sure that we don't have them on continuously to minimize the potential impacts to others that are concerned about it. There are other opportunities, you know, such as special events. Potentially this, I know the sign is going in the northbound direction. There's other signs that potentially going into Pacifica in other areas. We could use the signs to let folks know about those things, those particular activities. But once again, we just, I just want to caution everybody that we have to be very careful in terms of the, the verbiage that we put on there because there are national guidelines that restrict us from certain uses. But if the community is open to it, I mean, and emergency responders are wanting the sign to be used more frequently, that's something that Caltrans would, would work with individually. But I certainly understand that there are others that don't want the sign on as much, and we have to be cognizant of it. You know, there's other potential future, last thing I'll say, there are other uses of the sign that we talk about from a safety perspective in terms of trying to get motorists to slow down. That's been a big challenge for us. So that's something that, that we've used signs in the past to alert folks to reduce their speeds, to help with the local police departments. We definitely want to promote that. And I think those are opportunities all on the table. But at the same time, we do need to work with all the stakeholders involved to make sure that they're used just as judiciously as the signs are installed. So hopefully that clarifies my initial point in, in terms of the usage and the possibility that's out there for us, for everybody.
Commissioner Alio.
Thank you. And thank you, David, that does clarify the uses. So my comment, just want to share my thoughts. I think, considering all the factors, I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of this sign as well as the other project before 91 with the wireless at, at the Rainbow Mar intersection, the WSDS, I believe is the acronym. I think, I know the kind of usefulness of this sign has come up a couple of times. And I, when would I use it? When would it be valuable? And, and a couple of incidents stick out to me as to when it could potentially be used. Those who live in the north end of town, or actually all over town, know that during the winter time, we're usually good for a couple of accidents heading north on Highway One towards 280 and 35, when it starts getting slick, especially those early winter months in December and January. The use of the sign could potentially redirect traffic through Sharp Park Road on a 35 down to Westboro, down Westboro on the 280 around that incident ahead of time. And it would also avoid congesting arteries, smaller arteries in town, such as the Clarendon exit and Oceana Boulevard, people trying to get around and trying to the Manor neighborhood. That's one use case I see here being beneficial. The other is, is back in March, there was a pretty significant accident on 280 driving toward the northbound to San Francisco. I remember because I was almost one of those secondary collisions in it that David mentioned. Luckily, I avoided it. But in that situation, again, we could direct, or Caltrans could direct traffic over Sharp Park Road or around 280 down to 380 to 101 so that people could still make it to San Francisco around that incident. So I do see a, a, a general benefit to the community, given that we don't have any of these signs in town other than the, the temporary ones that either Caltrans puts in or the ones that are city owned. So I do see overall benefit. As I mentioned in my comments, I don't love the location for several factors. One is the reach of the motorists in town. And then the other is, is because it's directly adjacent to a private parcel that has been discussed in terms of development, where I think there's other locations along Highway One that could be adjacent to either already developed land or more extensive Caltrans property. But this isn't one of their CMSs, the CMS sign, which is much more heavy duty, the one of the tunnels, more permanent in structure. While yes, it is permanent, does have underground wiring, it is still made out of wooden posts and does seem like it could be relocated in the event that a project comes before us and, and that developer works with Caltrans on a appropriate plan, as well as the city to mitigate any negative, any ramifications of, of the location if approved. So those are my comments. I'm generally in favor of, of both 91 and 92 in front of us tonight. And that's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin.
I guess if I, looking at this, anything we can do to improve the throughput of that intersections worthwhile, if Caltrans can put up some sensors as they look like and they think they can increase the throughput and the safety of that Marina Del Mar one intersection, I'm certainly in favor of that. I'm not sure what the benefit of this sign is, whether the usability outweighs the kind of environment, you know, visual blight. My inclination is sensors, yes, sign, no. At least that's my, where I stand now.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Wright.
Yes, I was wondering from staff, if in light of everything that they've heard in terms of our discussion and our interaction with Caltrans, if they've had any change in their position whatsoever in terms of the way they're viewing this project?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wright. So on that note, I will take the opportunity to just kind of recenter where we are. The Caltrans has come to the city of Pacifica as we are the authorized jurisdiction to review applications for coastal development permits on behalf of the Coastal Commission, since this project is occurring in the coastal zone, to receive a coastal development permit. And so, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the use of the sign and, and the exact location of it. However, I just want to remind the commission that those types of discussions should be kind of focused on how that affects the commission's ability to make the findings for the coastal development permit, which Caltrans is seeking. So as mentioned earlier, you know, the city of Pacifica does not have jurisdiction to approve projects in, in the Caltrans right of way. We are simply, we simply have the authority to review and, and evaluate its potential to meet the coastal development permit findings.
And as Ms. O'Connor mentioned, what the city's role is in this instance is, again, not to decide whether the signs are appropriate or not. Caltrans has domain over the Highway One right of way, but to ensure that what Caltrans does in the Highway One right of way in Pacifica is consistent with the city's local coastal program. And that's where that connection exists between the plan that we have for our community and the findings for approval of a coastal development permit. In this case, for the two improvements that Caltrans is making. If you look at packet page 93, that's where the beginning of the specific analysis of making the findings for approval of the project was prepared by staff. And so, you know, we identified a relationship to coastal act policy number one, related to maximum access and recreational opportunities consistent with public safety. There is a relationship between safe traffic flow and safe public access in our analysis. There's also narrative on page C106 of the local coastal land use plan about the importance of public roadways and facilities within coastal neighborhoods designed to be compatible with the scale, intensity, and character of the neighborhood, as well as discussion in the LCLUP about, on page C112 of the LCLUP, because Highway One is Pacifica's lifeline, its appearance and safety are critical to the city and its future. And there are some bullet points there about safety and operational improvements, protecting coastal views and improving the visual edge of the highway. So there's certainly a relationship between the science design, placement, and those characteristics, for instance. And so, you know, there are other examples in the staff report on packet pages 93 and 94, but that's what Ms. O'Connor is referring to in trying to recenter the commission on its actual task, which is to consider whether it can make the findings for approval of the permit or not.
And then additionally, is there an appeal process if the abbot, for example, isn't happy with what our decision is this evening? Could you explain what that process might be for him?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take that one. There is a appeal, a local appeal process. So any person can take, can appeal the commission's actions on this, you know, on this permit within 10 days of the commission taking action on it. Additionally, because we are in the Coastal Commission Appeals jurisdiction, there is also an opportunity for a member of the public to appeal to the Coastal Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I guess what I've got here are comments, not questions. I've been kind of sitting quietly listening and I've pored over the LCLUP and tried to figure out from my perspective if this fits. I, I suppose I, I'm with some of the other commissioners who talked about the usefulness of this sign. I, I am one of those people who has heads of display on my company vehicle that gives me all this information before I start the car. It also doesn't service a, a large portion of Pacificans. But, you know, it's stated goal being to improve traffic and public safety. I guess I could kind of get behind that. Where I'm lost is the, the need to protect coastal views and improve the visual edge of the highway. It's, I can't see any way around this being just blight on otherwise very attractive green space along Highway One. So for me, it's, I don't see enough of a reason for this public benefit to, that outweighs the, the blight to that coastal view. So I would be inclined not to support the, the sign, all of the sensors. I have no problem with their attached to an existing infrastructure.
Commissioner Ferguson, could you help the commission and staff understand more about what specific aspects of the project contribute to the blight from your perspective?
I think you're, you're putting up what is a visually unappealing sign that, albeit to be used only in the case of emergency or for public safety, is just blocking what is the, one of the last green belts between the neighborhoods of Pacifica, right? And it's, I, I think that's a big attraction factor to people coming, driving the coast and coming down the coast to spend tourist dollars in the city of Pacifica and, and coming down to use our, our natural resources. We have a very limited amount of green open spaces left along Highway One. I mean, they're there and that's what attracts people to them. But I, I guess for me, it's a slippery slope. I, I don't see enough of a reason for this to, to justify putting something that, to my mind, is an eyesore between the, between Rockaway Beach and the businesses there, Gorilla Barbecue, where the, when the urban area starts again, I just, it doesn't, the, it's, it's the placement of it for me. It's, it's in one place where there isn't already any development and you're, you're, you're placing something that's very visually unappealing on the visual edge of a right of way that's used by people lots and lots just to come drive for the scenic beauty of it.
And so in addition to the sign, is there any concern about the placement or the extent of the Midwest guardrail system or MGS? Does that contribute to the point?
Yeah, the whole, I mean, there'll be a power drop off that pole. There's, I mean, there's the whole bit of infrastructure there. Guardrail, I think, is a kind of a thing you can expect along a highway as are signs, but we've existed without them up until this point. No, I mean, I don't hear anyone on here, we're all constituents in Pacifica, saying that this is something that we practically needed for all these years. Yeah, I think it's a, you're just adding, you're adding what to my mind is visual blight on the edge of the highway.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Mr. Murdoch, I think you froze for a minute. Do you have anything to say?
I think I captured most of that. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for the additional clarification.
I have one more question for David and your team. I remember reading through the staff report and there was mention that the infrastructure that would be installed, and, and I think it is both locations, would provide Caltrans insight to the current traffic situation. Is that correct? Am I recalling that correctly? Will Caltrans be using both of these locations, so the sign and of course, the facility that's going to go on the traffic signal pole as a way to measure the, the current traffic situation in this area? Is that correct?
So to, to clarify, the, the variable message sign, as of, as of today, we don't, we do not have a traffic sensor on it. But however, that's something that we've considered. But to, you know, obviously minimize the impacts, again, we've left that feature off. Now, yes, the traffic sensor at the intersection, yes, that is going to provide us information, you know, in real time to at least give us a better understanding of, you know, how many vehicles are using it and potentially also to help us optimize the traffic signal operations as well. But, you know, as, as it's your question, that there is no traffic sensing equipment. However, that's something, if the newer technology allows us to install, that is not, that does not require the height that we need. That's something that we would strongly consider actually in the near future, near, near future.
Okay, thank you. I am supportive of that. I think, and I think it's clear from the public comment and, and some of the comments from commissioners that Highway One could certainly use some improvement to the traffic. And, and part of that, I appreciate, comes from Caltrans taking the time to, to study and collect volume data on this area to help improve it in the future. I also agree with a lot of the commenters and some commissioners regarding the usefulness of the sign. I, I do, so I see it both ways. I see usefulness when it comes to decision making with the split between Highway One up to 280 and then Sharp Park. I mean, occasionally, probably potentially once a year, there's a huge accident on 101, on Highway One if someone accidentally drives the wrong direction, which has happened, I think, within the past year or two. However, a commenter mentioned, and I agree, once there's traffic, you know that there's traffic. You don't necessarily need a sign to tell you unless you're one of the first few people that are going to queue up behind that accident. However, I, I do want to personally stay on track with the staff report. And I understand we were redirected to the findings and, and given our purview on, on this item, I don't disagree with any staff's recommendation in the findings because I understand that, you know, we can't change Caltrans's analysis in this area and how Caltrans deems appropriate to, to serve this highway. So, so that's kind of where I stand on that aspect. Regarding the land use in the area where this sign will go, the variable message sign, with the current general plan that we are reviewing it against, which is not the one that we reviewed on June 11th, June 6th and 11th, I, I don't see any inconsistencies or red flags with that 42-year-old general plan. And it's unfortunate with the timing because I do think that there's a better location for this. think that there's a better location for this variable message sign with respect to the general plan that we just recommended approval to city council. I, I think especially a parcel of the size for the Pacifica Highlands project, not, not having reviewed the project, but a parcel of that size, knowing the density that it can have, there's going to be probably operation issues if that driveway needs to be too close to Reyna del Mar, which already has a long queue length and peak hours. So I think with the future general plan, this sign location is going to be a burden to that property owner because relocating their driveway would be tough from an operations standpoint, potentially. Or it's just going to be a burden to relocate with another encroachment permit to relocate the, the variable message sign. So, and then I also want to appreciate Commissioner Ferguson's points on the aesthetics. Given the current location, I do agree that it's not going to be the prettiest site. But for me, it's, it's not necessarily a deal breaker with regard, with regards to the findings. Vice Chair Hauser.
So I think in regards to the findings, so first of all, I'm, I have no problem with the one at Lindemar. I think when there's regards to the finding, there's something about keeping with the neighborhood character. Where was that? Public roadways and facilities within the coastal neighborhoods shall be designed to be compatible with the scale, intensity and character of the neighborhood and shall be consistent with environmental protection goals. I think it's consistent with environmental protection goals, but I'm not sure that it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So on, at least on that one, I'm kind of still leaning towards what Commissioner Ferguson had said, but on the one at Lindemar, I would have no problem approving that.
Commissioner Domaret.
Before having to sign off, I'd just like to say, I feel a little bit better if we have some good needed safety information on there. And I, it's been indicated that that could be a decision. There is the availability to do those kinds of things, so I feel good about that. Did I miss it in the report? Or maybe Caltrans has a PowerPoint, one of the PowerPoint slides that would have shown a graphic of the highway with a photoshopped image of what that sign would look like in terms of size. Is that in there? Or did I miss it? I missed it. Okay. All right, it must be a big sign, though. Okay, so again, I'll have to be signing off and good luck to all.
Thank you, Commissioner Domaret. And actually, if anyone from the Caltrans team has that image, do you mind pulling it up? Thank you.
Chair Berman, I think this is what was referenced, it's on packet page ninety-two. So I can zoom in on either of these or perhaps there's a different graphic if someone has one, then I can stop sharing.
I have no, no request. Does anyone from the commission want a closer look or anything?
I wouldn't mind a zoom on the bottom one.
Is that any better, Vice Chair Hauser?
I think we are, has everyone had a chance to digest the aesthetics? All right. Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Leo.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just add one more comment and then maybe a procedural question since I think we may be may want to take these items separately. But my comment is, it's my understanding there's currently a sign there already, perhaps an even less useful sign that tells us how many miles it takes us to get to Davis City in San Francisco. And additionally, there's also a random, random signs that go up on the private parcel nonprofit signs that would be in the case. But there's random signs that go up at the Christmas tree lot, slightly north of that location, too, where I think similar arguments made tonight can be made. So I want all those to be considered as well. I'll move on to my procedural question. So as I read the motion, I couldn't figure out a way how to vote on these nine-one, let's say these nine-one, location nine-one, location nine-two separately as a commission. So maybe it's to staff in terms of, based off of the comments I'm hearing tonight, we may want to vote on them separately. And if we do, what would a motion like that look like?
If I may, Chair Berman. So I would suggest the motion would take the action that you'd like to, to do to segment out the decisions and have that be all in one motion. So it could be where you approve or one of them and then, you know, continue discussion on the second part. So the direction would be given in this all-in-one motion.
Commissioner Leo, did you have anything else?
I had nothing to add.
Well, I'll, I do want to give Ms. Shridhar a chance to speak in case it's a response to someone's question. But before we get to that, just trying to gauge the commission's appeal to combining the motion or separating, I mean, it's, I think there's a lot of concerns that we have, but they don't necessarily pertain to our purview of this item. So I think Commissioner Ferguson's mention of not quite agreeing with one of the findings, which, which I do agree with him. I'm wondering if anyone else in the, on the commission has a similar thought on that. I know Vice Chair Hauser mentioned that she did. Effectively, I'm trying to get to, is there a condition of approval that may make people feel more comfortable with, with this item? I'll let that settle with the commission while I pass the mic over to Ms. Shridhar. Do you have a, a response to someone's question?
I, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to speak to the efforts that we've put in to visually mitigate the appearance of the signs and the, the service controller boxes that we are planning to install. It's true that we cannot reduce the size of the panel because we need that to accommodate all the messaging that we'd like to display. And that's, that's the size we need for motorists to be able to read the information. But we have made an attempt to sort of use wooden posts for supporting the panels or we could even investigate painting the controller boxes to a more, to a different shade like brown or green and try to blend it in using earth tones. Other than that, you know, it is electronic. We've also tried to place it where there's existing urban infrastructure, you know? There's existing power lines and all of that. So from that perspective, I think we've done our best to mitigate visual impacts. We could add some vegetation if it doesn't require maintenance and soften the look further. But we've made considerable effort to, you know, try and mitigate the appearance of this equipment. So it's true that it will certainly not blend in fully with the existing vegetation. Also, the sign is currently located on the east side of the pedestrian pathway, not necessarily blocking coastal views on the west side. So I just wanted to point that out. Zach, if you'd like to add anything to it, you could do that.
Yeah, I think you did quite well there, just to reiterate. Yeah, we've, we've done a lot to try to minimize our visual impacts there, as Nandini said. As much as possible to convey the messages for emergency and incident-related messaging. Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to use sign materials that will suit the rural coastal highway. And like Nandini said, we could use some additional elements to soften our, our visual impacts there, like choosing a color that would be more appropriate to, to the commission here. The staff report mentioned something like that for possible replanting there or, or a planting plan to reduce the visual impacts of the controller cabinets specifically. So I just wanted to reiterate that we have tried to do whatever we can to minimize the impacts of the VMS signs. Thank you.
Chair Berman, just wanting to follow up on Mr. Gifford's comment. Staff has included a condition of approval to include a landscaping plan to soften the appearance of the control and the, the control structure. So that is already included in the draft resolution.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Commissioner Godwin.
There's one other option we haven't discussed tonight that's just becoming available, and that's a holographic road sign. That way you don't need any physical there, it's just projected in the air over the roadway using essentially laser technology. These systems exist. I'm sure Caltrans can, can get one if we want, and that would eliminate all the infrastructure. Could somebody from Caltrans comment on why we aren't getting a holographic one since there seems to be so much resistance down the whole coast side? And we have to go with this somewhat old-fashioned electromechanical signs.
Is someone from Caltrans able to help answer that question?
I can try to do that, but I was hoping David, David would help me out. We, we do have limited funding at this time for this project. And something like what the commissioner mentioned about using holograms is likely to require newer technology, more costly. And typically, I just wanted to mention that typically when projects are programmed, it's programmed in what's called the State Highway Operations Protection Program. And that's typically on a four-year cycle, updated every two years. If we had to investigate something like this at this point, it would take a considerable amount of time. And at this point in time, this is the best technology we have to be able to address the needs of this highway, especially the emergency incidents that, that have occurred and could occur in the, in the, in the near future. So it's, it's an interesting concept and we would certainly investigate it if, for the future, if possible. Again, at this point, we have this project before the commission. So we would really appreciate it if the commission would consider supporting it.
Yeah, let me, I just, I think it's pretty brief. I think that's, that is a novel and innovative idea. I think that's something that, you know, from a statewide perspective, in my, in my upcoming assignment that we can look into. But that technology has been improved nationally and here locally in the California for use. So I think at this point, we've gone with the latest and thinnest low-profile design that we've, that is currently on the market. And that's something that we feel very comfortable that will take us in the, in the near future.
Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, you asked if there was a potential condition. And I, I, I'm really torn about this. I don't see it as necessarily being in keeping. But at the same time, I can't get past the fact that staff is in favor of it. And I am concerned about the neighboring property person. If, if Caltrans was willing to truly work with the neighbor to make it so that we could have our cake and eat it, too, I guess I could be persuaded to support it with that condition. It's a really, really tough call, though. That's all.
Commissioner Hauser.
I, I want to echo what you just said, Commissioner Wright, because I, I agree that it's a really, really tough call. I think the thing for me that it makes it hard is not the bulk of the sign. I understand that it's slim. I think it's the color and that it's lit. And it's, it's meant to be perceptible. You want it to be red. I mean, I, so, so I, I understand that hiding it is counterintuitive. I mean, I think I just, I think the hard part is I recognize how hard Caltrans has worked on this and that I don't want you to lose your funding for the sign. But I also think it's maybe just not in the right location. And I think something that Chair Berman said at the beginning of this, of this, you know, during the question period, was that it may make more sense moved two hundred yards or two. I, I don't remember the, the distance, but moved northward. And I understand that that takes additional study. I think the reason that I feel like that is because if you look at what's northward, it's not, you know, as, as Commissioner Ferguson said, it's not this green belt with, you know, a lot of existing trees. That's really, you know, a beautiful part of the coastal drive that people take when they go to Highway One. It's, you know, asphalt parking lots. And there are still joint poles up and down the stretch of Highway One. So that's not a change. There's still, you know, Caltrans right-of-way over adjacent properties that has room for the sign. There's another green and white sign that says, you know, Reyna del Mar, you know, upcoming or whatever, that you guys already have a sign up there. I think that would be, that general vicinity is a more appropriate location. I mean, why I don't think the current one to, you know, through the chair, I believe one of the commissioners had said that there's currently a sign there, but that sign that's currently there is green and white and it's not lit. So it blends in while still being perceptible to the, you know, I, I, I just, that's, that's kind of where I stand. So I think I would be personally, if we would be willing to continue this, to explore a location that would be slightly further north, I think I would feel comfortable doing that. And approving the one at Lindemar. Other than that, I, I'm not sure if anything else that I've heard in the last twenty minutes has, has gotten me closer towards, you know, a black and yellow lit sign in front of a bunch of trees, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. And I personally agree with what it sounds like we're coming to a conclusion and potentially a continuance or a condition of approval. Commissioner Leo.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. I think many of the same points are being raised now and it's probably ready for someone to make a motion. I think frankly, my motion probably won't approve, so I won't make one at this time, but I'm happy to make one. Or I'm happy to make one if there's no other motions that folks should think about right now.
If anyone is ready to make a motion, it, it sounds like some of the things we're toying with and staff, please help guide me here. I think we, we all agree that it's not necessarily the right location, especially due to the aesthetics of the um, especially due to the aesthetics of the existing condition that's right there. I think that's one of the clearest things to point to. Um, where a location further north would place it a little more, you know, in a commercial setting with parking lot and, and more infrastructure. So um if staff could help, is that something that we can condition in of approval? Or is that something that we may um want to have a, a continuance on? And if anyone in the commission wants to help clarify or, or disagree, please feel free. Commissioner Hauser.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I personally, you know, if the rest of the commission felt strongly that a condition would cover it, I might be brought on board for the right condition, but personally, my feeling is that, you know, we're talking very broad terms about a, somewhere further north for this. And, you know, I, I'd like to see kind of where that is, you know, I, I would like to see it. I also don't wanna presume that, you know, I don't under, I, I, I know there was a reference made to that this funding has a expiration date on it, and I don't wanna approve something with a condition where additional study would be taken and Caltrans loses the funding. I mean, I think, I think to some extent, we should leave a little bit of this in their hands, knowing that we're probably not, we probably don't have the momentum from the commission on this current location for this particular of the two signs.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Would it be possible for us to leave this sign out of it for now so that we can move forward with part of this? And maybe continue the part that we seem to be having such a hard time with?
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Liel um kind of mentioned this splitting up. I think we have two locations, two facilities that we're reviewing tonight, correct? It's the one um, the sensor on the traffic signal at Reyna del Mar. And then there's this sign um that's been heavily talked about tonight. Is that correct? We're just looking at those two locations for facilities, correct, staff?
That is correct.
Okay, so can we, do we have the ability to split our motion and take those two locations separately?
So I, I think it's our opinion that you can take different actions on the two components of the project. But uh given the structure of the agenda and the permit in question, um, we would ask for that to be in a single motion.
Oh, a single motion, but we could have different determinations for each of the, okay. So it sounds like we're looking at potentially moving to approve the sensor on the traffic signal pole at Reyna del Mar. And then a motion, and then also continuing um the item for the variable messaging sign with the comments that we've presented thus far. And, and to clarify those comments, uh, we're considering, we would like Caltrans to review locating the sign further north. Um, I personally wanna acknowledge something that Commissioner Liel said a while ago. There, it would be beneficial to locate this sign north of the Valmar neighborhood because that is a large portion of the community that could benefit from the sign. So potentially reconsidering the feasibility of that location north of Reyna del Mar. Um, but effectively taking the comments that we've talked about thus far. Uh, Commissioner Hauser.
As you were talking, Chair, I was like, the police station. But um, uh, I mean, I did, I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but I did. Um, if it pleases the chair, I would like to hear from Mr. Mann to understand, you know, again, with the funding constraints that you have, if a continuance be made, like, is there a time clock that you have? Is there a date certain that you'd need? Like, I, I, I would, if, if the chair is, is open to it, I think I would really love for Mr. Mann to give us one more.
Yes, please.
So Nandini, you're the pro, um, you're, you're handling the project management. Could you let us know what our funded deadlines are? I do understand that we do not have any more time extensions with the California Transportation Commission. Um, and any more significant delays in general would cause the funds to lapse. And that we would have no recourse to make these improvements or add these funds to any other project um out there along the coast. So Nandini, could you just give us the exact dates that we're looking at right now?
So that, that is true, David. We do have a one-time extension uh that would allow us to uh have, get our fund vote by, say, January of twenty twenty-three and be in construction by spring. Um, beyond that, our uh funding would obviously expire. We are only allowed a one-time extension. Um, so if, you know, if we were to work with the city and cons- cons- uh consider moving the signs uh two hundred or three hundred feet away, that would trigger new studies, environmental studies. And uh as I mentioned, the parcel right next to this VMS sign is extremely sensitive. And Zach can uh back me up on it because we've uh had issues with the archaeological resources being disturbed. So this was uh, or this is at this point, the, the optimal location for us to uh install a VMS sign. So uh everything else uh that the city could condition or recommend, we'd have to investigate. And I, I can't say at this point what the impacts might be. Uh, but we have limited time to use of the funds that are currently programmed. And as I, and, and it, and just to reiterate, it's taken us about eight years from the time that the project was programmed to get to this point. So if we were to lose the funding, then I think we will be starting from scratch again. Does that answer your question, David?
Yes, I think, I think that helps out from a timeline perspective. Um, but I think at this point, we're interested in hearing um any specific feedback that we could take back and we would, you know, obviously have to go through the process. Um, but I think, you know, it'd be, you know, hearing feedback is better, uh from, from the commission is better than not hearing anything. Um, because we really definitely would like to do anything that we can to um put the messaging out there on the corridor, uh, given the number of um feedback that we've heard from the general community as a whole and the travelers that um have been using that on Highway One. Uh, so I think that's something that we would like to hear and uh that we've been, do deal with something in the short term. Um, I think we would be open, but you know, obviously the constraints in terms of funding and all the other um right away environmental or something that we take very seriously at this point.
Commissioner Godwin.
I'm open to having the sign as Commissioner Hauser said by the police station. I think that's an appropriate place for a warning sign. I think people wouldn't be shocked by it, or it wouldn't take away from the rest of the community. I mean, if we have to use this technology, I think that's the one place I'm comfortable having.
Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you um for that. Um, just if, if that's really the feedback, like, uh, so taking some of the feedback that I've heard of um having it north of Reyna del Mar. Um, and again, thinking of the police station as an approximately appropriate place. Um, you know, there's a, I, I don't think in front of the police station, like exactly in front of it where there's a lot of greenery and trees um is the right place for it. But there is a stretch that looks like it has a wide shoulder that I believe would be Caltrans right of way um north of the audio, auto body shop or right next to the northern property line of the auto body shop. Um, where I don't think that type of sign would be obtrusive. I think it would be in keeping with the particular character of that intersection and that use. Um, so that's my very detailed clarification of what I meant when I said the police station.
Thank you. I, I do want to appreciate that. I think part of the locating of this sign has to do with decision-making time before reaching sharp part. Although I agree the police station would be a nice location for it. Um, I think we would probably need to leave it to Caltrans to um identify the proper location. But kind of a compromise that I, I personally think is in our jurisdiction is I think the Reyna del, Reyna del Mar intersection has a lot of volume, even from people within Valmar. So I think it would be beneficial for this sign to be north of Reyna del Mar. Um, just to be equitable for that neighborhood. And also considering the aesthetics that have been mentioned thus far. And, and there is some commercial, currently commercial space that provides opportunity there. And given that there's no left turnouts of the driveway, and then the sign would be north of the driveways, it shouldn't be a stopping site distance issue. So I, I think we gave a good amount of feedback. Um, I'm wondering, members of the commission, um, would you be amenable to approving the first location nine dash one and continuing item or the location nine dash two? Commissioner Liel.
Thank you. Um, before I answer that, uh, question for staff. Um, I know it's on the table right now, but let's say we just gave the feedback in terms of the location. I would generally agree with that location. Um, we gave the feedback to Caltrans. Let's say, I know it's on the table, but let's say we approve both locations this evening. Um, is there anything stopping Caltrans from coming back to us prior to the expiration of their um, their, their deadlines um with a, a new location near where we're suggesting or where our feedback's based off of and the feedback of the community? Um, and amending the project for, uh, for, for the review and potential approval by, um, by the planning commission. Um, so uh, Commissioner Liel, I'll start and then ask uh Senior Planner O'Connor to uh add on to my initial remarks. So uh I think there are likely to be a number of steps that Caltrans would need to take through its internal processes as well as its obligations as the lead agency under SEQA to perhaps perform uh environmental analysis of the alternative project location. All of that preceding some response to the city. Um, it also will take some period of time and perhaps uh Ms. O'Connor can uh outline what the timeline has been like since application to public hearing. Um, given the amount of coordination and analysis that the city also needs to undertake to evaluate the potential alternative location. And then trying to gel all of that, you know, with the timelines that uh uh Nandini um had outlined for us. Uh, you know, the extension for funding, I think, through January and needing to start construction uh in spring of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I don't know uh how feasible it would be necessarily from a big picture level um to have all of that occur in this compressed timeline. Can we get some sense, though, uh Senior Planner O'Connor, uh as far as the timeline that the city review has taken to date?
Um, yeah, so the application officially came in um eh April twenty-sixth of this year. Um, for the CDP from the City of Pacifica, uh, we worked um uh swiftly to, to bring it to public hearing um due to their timelines. Um, but that doesn't account for what um uh Deputy Director Murdock mentioned of, you know, the sequel work and all of the, the lead agency work that they'll have to do prior to um even applying with us. So um, you know, we, we were able to do it in, in approximately two months um this time. Um, um, but that, that doesn't account for the full scope of work that they'll likely have to go through.
Yeah, and I guess the, the, the point I'm trying to get at with my question is, is in terms of kind of offering feedback in terms of a new location, there's steps that have to happen to get a new location. If we approve the current location this night, tonight, we may get a new location, we may not, but we may get a new traffic improvement on Highway One. If we continue, those same steps have to contin- have to happen, but then we're against the time crunch. And so um I just wanted to kind of clarify that if we did approve, we could also potentially feasibility aside of all the steps happening, that new location couldn't come before us for this sign that's in discussion tonight prior to, let's say, the end of the year, if all the ducks line up in a row and we could see that new location. This is all hypothetical. Whether it's continued or whether it's um approved tonight.
Uh, Commissioner Liel, are you seeking confirmation from staff?
Yes, I'm seeking confirmation or not confirmation from staff. That Calcan- Caltrans could bring location nine-two back before the planning commission. Um, uh, feasibility aside, but from a project standpoint, they could bring it back. They could say, okay, this project's actually not gonna work. And they come to city staff and say, we need a new location. They can bring that back to staff, get everything lined up, and they can come back, can come back before the planning commission. I could imagine from a process standpoint, they could either file an amendment to an approved application or they could file a second application. Perhaps part of that would depend on whether any appeals have been filed and that process was still playing out for uh the site if it were to be approved in its currently proposed location. So there are options for Caltrans procedurally to get before the planning commission again with uh some other project vocation. Okay, thank you.
Um, oh, some hands went away. Uh, Ms. uh Shredar. Eddie, did you have a response?
Um, I just wanted to uh inform the commissioners that, uh, you know, you're considering the uh police department location. That was something that Caltrans had looked into initially, and we had proposed uh that area as uh a location for, for a VMS sign. And um since our environmental uh document was approved in twenty twenty-one, uh, I'm sorry, I don't recall the exact reasons, but there were environmental concerns with that location, and that was one of the reasons we had to move it. So while we could work with the city and investigate that location again, um, it's, it's very likely that it wouldn't work due to environmental uh biological or archaeological resources. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I would be in favor, actually, of approving it in um Commissioner Hauser's location and have Caltrans have the ability to come back to us before the loss of funding and say, no, we have to put it at the already approved location in the event they weren't able to effectuate that in time. Is that something that's possible, Steph?
Um, I'll take a stab at that one. Um, there's definitely some um SEQA concerns with that proposal. Um, you would be approving a project um design that's not covered under the environmental review of the document that we've um considered tonight. So um, I, I think that would remove its feasibility.
So I guess what are, uh, yes, Commissioner, oh, uh, Commissioner Hauser.
Um, I, I appreciate the clarification. I, I, yeah, I, I would wanna make sure that there were any disturbances. I do wanna be clear that the location that um that I'm talking about and that Commissioner Wright just mentioned as well is previously disturbed. So that's not to say, I mean, obviously, there needs to be sequency, but whatever, whatever process he is, Caltrans needs to go through, um, we'd wanna see those having been done sufficiently. Um, but uh, you know, uh, what I appreciate is that when area is previously disturbed, that should take some of those concerns off the table. So for example, the biological concern is probably less.
All right, I'll get to you in a All right, I'll get to you in a second, Commissioner Liel, just kind of looking at the hour, it's ten thirty. Um, I think we are toying with a motion. Don't know if anyone is brave enough to make the leap, but just kind of want to guide us somewhere. Commissioner Liel.
I was about to make a motion. Um, I had to hand out to the thought. Commissioner Hauser was going to make one, but um I'll make a motion. Moves that the planning commission finds the state Route One Traffic Operational Systems Improvements Project Post Mile Zero Four S M dash one dash twenty six point forty three to forty seven dot twenty, initial study with negative declaration, May twenty twenty one, S H number two zero two zero eight zero zero two two nine, prepared by California Department of Transportation District for adequate for purposes of complying with the California Environmental Quality Act and approves coastal development permit CDP four forty or CDP dash four forty dash twenty two by adopting the resolution included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Liel, did you, so your motion was per the staff report, is that correct?
That's correct, sure.
Okay, so we have a motion per the staff report, so approval of both locations. Looking to see if there is a second to support that approval. And I guess while people digest that motion, um staff, so effectively, I I kind of feels like we're in a rock enough between a rock and a hard place. So there's we're having a tough time trying to provide input where we feel more comfortable of the location of the nine dash two. Um, but it sounds like regardless of what happens effectively, it could just be more heartache to con- continue the item, but we're going to end up with the same result. I don't know, that's putting it in layman's terms, but just I don't know if if you could help provide some guidance.
Sure, Chair Berman, I think of all the the deliberation that I've heard from the commission, it sounds like there are concerns, uh and there's not a clear consensus on the commission to support the project as it's been proposed. There is, I think, uh, a good amount of support for a different location for the sign north of Reyna Del Mar Avenue. Uh, but for reasons articulated by the applicant, they have previously considered that and believe that perhaps it's not feasible from a sequence standpoint, or at least within within the type of document they have prepared or are interested in preparing, um that being a negative declaration. Um, I think there was also some inquiry as to relocating the sign somewhat northward from its current location, but still within that same roadway segment. And we heard some information uh from the applicant that there are potential archaeological resource concerns that would perhaps preclude that relocation. So uh there seems to be a fair amount of information from the applicant suggesting that a location other than the location that's proposed may not be something they are able to undertake as far as a project. And so it sounds to me like the commission is essentially in a position of considering whether it can make the findings for the project location as it is. And so uh it may warrant, you know, some further deliberation on that point. Uh, more specific information about the findings um that may be of concern to the commission. We've heard from Commissioner Ferguson about aesthetic concerns and that the project as proposed is out of character and not consistent uh with the LCP uh as it's been proposed. It may be possible, you know, with some further clarification and guidance that if the commission continued this, you know, a month for a month from now to another public hearing, that might give Caltrans some time and some incentive to investigate other options um for improving the sign's appearance. And if they come back and and they cannot do anything, then the commission can really drill down on whether it is able to make the findings to approve the project. That would be one, I think, uh potential course of action for the commission to take tonight.
Thank you. What's the commission's, I know Commissioner Liel has a motion on the table, but what's the commission's uh thoughts on continuing? Commissioner Hauser.
If it's acceptable to stop in the city attorney, I would make a motion to recommend approval for nine dash one and continue nine dash two to a date certain per Mr. Murdock's uh current uh recommendation, and I would consider um doing that for the second meeting of January or the first uh meeting of August.
I think you meant uh July, correct?
Sorry, at ten thirty six, my brain stops working as quickly.
I know, sure. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I was going to say exactly what Commissioner Hauser said.
Chair Berman, I just wonder if we could give the applicant an opportunity to um offer a perspective, you know, uh we're assuming that, you know, perhaps a month is sufficient time. I don't know if that would work or not uh for Caltrans's internal processes. Uh, and also to hear, you know, would would they be in favor of getting approval for one component and and not both? Uh, or if they'd rather come back with both and get a a decision perhaps at the continued hearing.
Okay, yes, please, uh David or Nadine.
So Nandi, let me let me just state that I think getting positive feedback for one component would be help would be helpful. You know, obviously, we would like both elements of the project. But I think, you know, we want to really drill down and work with the with the community here to to find something that's palatable. You know, I think um, you know, re- anything relocating from where it is today would be, you know, something that would be risky. But at least we're worth considering. I don't know if we can get that done within a month. So I think um, you know, we have to consider that uh from our consider consider that um as part of the decision making process, but I think um having continue allowing this item uh for other for the VMS to to continue is, I think, something at this juncture, um if we if there is no, if we don't have the support for the the current location, um something that we're open to. And Nandini, do you want to add into the the timelines that we remind everybody the timelines that we're looking at at this point?
Yes, uh David, um I agree with you there. However, my fear is that having investigated many locations, we might end up being in the same position as we are today, which is what one of the commissioners mentioned. And uh, that said, uh i- it's likely to take more than a month for us to come up with a new location investigated for environmental issues. Uh, we would be cutting it close. It would delay our request for funds. But uh it's possible we we'll be able to accommodate it. If not in July, I'm not too sure. Perhaps August is a possibility. But I'd I'd have to ask Zach to weigh in on the timeline for investigating environmental impacts uh for potential new location for a VMS sign. And of course, ideally, it would be best if we could get both today, but if that's not likely to happen, I think we can work with the with the city and the community to come up with a new location, if that's feasible.
Right, I think, Nandi, I want to add that we just, I think initially tonight, it's just very difficult for us to go look at, you know, all the project history, you know, that we've done over the last few years. So before responding officially, knowing the issues of the various alternative sites. You know, we want to we want to find out, you know, all the locations that have been looked at in the past uh before responding any further. And then, of course, at that point, if it is a location that is has that we haven't previously considered or we've considered, but there are other constraints. That's additional time that we need. So um, you know, maybe one suggestion I'm throwing out there that um we can work with the with the uh the city planning uh to find a an appropriate time that we come back for this item. Um, if that, if this is uh something that um we don't have support for at its current location.
That sounds like a plan. We can certainly do that. I can I can tell you that this is the third or fourth location that we've uh we've looked into. And so every time we move the location, we end up uh having to revalidate our environmental document, and that's likely to happen again. So all that takes time, but certainly we can work with the city to investigate uh and come up with a location that might be more palatable to staff and the commissioners.
Right, and it's a definite risk, you know, you know, any any relocation at this point will, you know, in my point of view, will just put the uh the project at risk. And, you know, I I want to be very clear that, you know, um we do, and Caltrans does not have any projects planned uh for this area uh in the near future, especially for these types of technology improvements um at this point. So, you know, we're looking at a long horizon in terms of a a follow-up effort uh for new installations at this point. But in the meantime, I think, you know, I think we definitely want to make sure that we have all the information at hand before we make that um, you know, recommendation of when we potentially could come back to the commission uh with a new revised proposed alternative.
Commissioner Godwin.
I just want to make sure the applicant knows we can continue an item a second time. This doesn't commit them to one date. It's a, they're having issues meeting it that they can't ask for a second continuance, and we wouldn't readily grant that if additional time is needed. Or we can start today and say, hey, a month is probably going to be tight. How about continuing for two months? I'd like to get some feedback from the Caltrans folks on whether what timeline would be most comfortable for them.
Chair Berman, if you'll allow, I think from staff's perspective, it would be good to have a target date that we can all um work cooperatively towards. And so I'm recognizing a month really isn't a month when you factor in time to write the report and publish the agenda packet. We might want to look no earlier than August fifteenth, which is the second meeting in August. And um, you know, we could certainly consider a date farther out for Caltrans, but as Commissioner Godwin said, let's have a target. If we need more time, we can, you know, have the commission continue it again. And at least we can uh include some information on the status and the progress made uh to date uh on August fifteenth or whatever the continuance date might end up being.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser.
This is the chair. I'm happy to take a stab at a motion that somewhat follows that.
Sounds good.
Before before um you do that, uh Vice Chair Hauser, I just wanted to point out that there was a motion on the floor. Um, and uh the chair, you had said that bef- uh before it was considered that you would make some comments. And so it'd be great if um, Chair, if you could put a call out um for a second and and consider the motion officially dead if that is the case before proceeding.
Um, I'd like, I do see, thank you for that. Um, I do see Commissioner Liel's hand up. I'd like to hear from him before killing his motion effectively. Commissioner Liel.
Uh, I was going to withdraw my motion from the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel. So the the first motion that was made was withdraw withdrawn. And Commissioner Hauser, would you like to take a stab at a new motion?
Yes, and um and uh Ms. Sharma, please correct me if I don't quite do this correctly. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna board this. In regards to location nine dash one, a move that the planning commission finds that the state Route One Traffic Operational Systems Improvements Project Post Miles Zero Four S M dash one dash two six point four three to four seven point two zero. Initial study with negative declaration, May twenty twenty one, State Clearinghouse Number two zero two zero zero eight zero two two nine, prepared by California Department of Transportation District Four adequate for purposes of complying with the California Environmental Quality Act and approves coastal development permit CDP four four zero dash two two by adopting the resolution um as regards solely location nine dash one. Included as attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval and exhibit A to the resolution and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. And in regards to location nine dash two, I move that the planning commission uh continue this item to the date certain of um, I believe Mr. Murdock said August fifteenth.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, August fifteen.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. Commissioner Wright?
I'd second that.
Motion and second, uh can we have a roll call then?
Chair Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
No.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
That motion passes with uh five votes in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. Okay, so um, given our amendment to the order of agenda, next up is Commission Communications and Commission Communications first. Are there any Commission Communications? Vice Chair Hauser.
Um, I just wanted to mention um that outside of the um the planning commission, um I uh worked with the Science Department over at Oceana High School um to set up uh two fog collectors over in their community garden. It's a super cool, sustainable water collecting technology. And uh if anybody wants a picture, I'm happy to send it, but I thought that was something cool and um and I wanted to give everybody the update.
I'd love a picture. Please send it to me. Or uh how about you could send it to staff and then staff could send it to all of us. Thank you. Uh, any other uh Commission Communications? I don't see any hands, so uh Staff Communications.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, as mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, uh the city council will be conducting a special meeting on Saturday, June twenty fifth at nine AM to consider the planning commission's recommendation to adopt the comprehensive general plan update and to certify the environmental impact report. We have published the agenda this evening for that meeting, and so it is available for the public on the city's meeting portal. And if anybody has questions about the meeting, they can reach out to the planning department staff.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. So before we move on to the next item, I want to recognize that it's ten forty eight and although this is a continued public public hearing, we are going to listen to public comment. I'm I'm wondering the council or the commission's kind of target for for how long we may be able to stay up tonight. Four, I see a four. Oh, man, I don't know if I can do that. Um, I think I woke up at four today, actually, so that'd be a full twenty four hours for me. Vice Chair Hauser?
You know, I I I'm a little concerned that, you know, we've been watching the amount of attendees whittle down, whittle down, whittle down. And the goal here is to hear public comment. And um by the fact that I think July and January are the same month, I would recognize that I'd probably be able to give a fuller attention um on a different day when maybe this is the only item on the agenda. Maybe we get to start early. I I don't really know, um but I would be in favor of giving the public a better, more timely opportunity to provide comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. I would agree with that. Uh, I have been watching. We started at probably thirty and now we're at fifteen. So I'd I'd like to, I think we discussed continuing to a date certain, or we didn't discuss it, but staff, I I believe you perhaps have taken a poll of the eligible commissioners for agenda item number two and their availability.
That's right, Chair Berman, uh and That's right, Chair Berman. Uh, and so of the options uh available before this Saturday's meeting of the City Council, it looks like a quorum of the commission is only available on Thursday till uh June twenty-third uh with a meeting start time of seven P M.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wright?
Um, lost it. I'm gonna have to come back to it. Sorry.
And you wanted to go till four A M?
Berman, I'll just uh.
Oh, I, I got, I got what it is, actually. Um, since a number of people from the public have waited actually to make a comment, I think it would be of us to do them the courtesy of, of allowing them to speak. They've waited a good amount of time. And I don't think it's right for us to push them off to have them wait in line again. That, that's what it was.
That's a really fair point. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Murdock, you were in the middle of saying something?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that we're currently in between agenda items and talking about matters related to one of the agenda items. And so perhaps we could um call the item and then as part of the preliminary discussion of the item, continue this.
Sure, yeah, thank you. I intended for the start of that to be a question of how long are we gonna go tonight? Um, well, before I open the next agenda item, I'm wondering if any commissioners may need to recuse themselves. Commissioner Liel.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will need to recuse my s- um, myself from the next item um due to ownership of real property in the Sharp Park specific planned area. Um, so I'll accuse myself, given this is the last agenda item on tonight's uh agenda, I'll be leaving the meeting as a commissioner.
Thank you. Have a good night. Commissioner Ferguson.
Uh, for the same reason as Commissioner Liel, uh, ownership of real property in the West Sharp Park area, I will also have to recuse myself. Good luck and have a good night, guys.
Thanks. Good night. All right, moving on to the next item. So consideration of Sharp Park specific plan and recom- oh, I'm sorry, I'm opening up continued public hearings. Um, and agenda item number two. Consideration of Sharp Park specific plan and recommendations to City Council. Recommended sequoia action find adoption of the Sharp Park specific plan substantially consistent with the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan final environmental impact report. State Clearinghouse number two zero one two zero two two zero four six. Recommended action is adopt the attached resolution to recom- to recommend City Council approval of the Sharp Park specific plan. Now, um, Ms. Sharma, can we, do we have to listen to the staff report before we discuss how we will continue this item?
Um, Chair, uh, you may have discussion um amongst yourselves on planet preliminary items, such as what you suggested before hearing staff report if you, if it pleases the Chair.
Yes, um. Okay, so I think we're, we are talking about continuing, but I think it's a fair point that there are at least twelve people that I see on Zoom, potentially others calling in that potentially have comments that they've waited a long time to say tonight. Um, my question for Ms. Sharma, are we able to open public comment right now and listen to those who are on the call and waiting hours to speak? And then keep it open for our adjourned meeting and then start the adjourned meeting with public comment for those who have not spoken yet?
Um, administrative way that might be difficult to, to do, um, to keep track of who's spoken. Um, and so generally, yes, but it, it might be difficult to actually accomplish that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wright.
Is staff willing to rise to that challenge to keep track of who's spoken?
Uh, well, yes, we'll, we'll make every effort to uh record the name that the speakers use to identify themselves if they provide a name. Um, looking at the attendee list, um, assuming the people whose names are shown are the actual speakers, uh, many of them are, are familiar and known to us. And so hopefully we will have an opportunity to readily identify these speakers and keeps uh proper track of, of who's spoken already.
Thank you. Really appreciate the, the effort. Um, Commissioner Hauser.
The only thing I wonder, and I don't want to complicate this, um, is that if the people in the commu- if the community members who wish to speak tonight would benefit from presentation of the staff report, um, also noting that we've already heard a staff report on this and maybe staff's report as we've talked about this and we're contin- you know, we're prepared to answer questions. In which case, I have no issue with what Commissioner Wright is, is proposing. Um, but I also, I, I, I don't know. I think that if we have the benefit of hearing the staff report before we make our comments and ask questions, I think the public should have that benefit too. It's a hard, it's hard. I, I hate the idea of people sitting around for four hours and then not being able to comment, but I also want it to be fair and I also want to be able to really be enthusiastically listening. So it's a, it's a hard one.
Certainly. Um, yeah, I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that we had another pretty major item on this, on the agenda tonight that we, of course, wanted to, to do our due diligence on. Um, I guess, Ms. Sharma, is it, what is your guidance, you know, representing city, city attorney on um, when are we able to listen to public comment is required to hear the staff report? I think the answer is no to that, but please go ahead and answer.
That's correct. Um, you may reorder an item uh and take public, as long as you take public comment. Um, that is sufficient to satisfy our obligations.
Okay.
Chair, Chair Berman, may I make a, a suggestion for you to consider?
Yes.
So I think um, you know, hearing the staff report tonight might be helpful, given that the flow of the meeting might be a little more contiguous if we then open the public hearing and then uh adjourn and resume with the public hearing still open. It might be a bit disjointed to do that without having the staff report um occur first. Um, and then also, we, you might consider just polling those participants of the meeting that are still on the call uh to see, you know, if they could raise their hands, if they would prefer to speak tonight. Um, as opposed to, um, you know, some of them may prefer to speak when they're, they're fresher as well.
Are we allowed, are we, so we're allowed to do that? I could take a poll.
I, I don't, I don't know if there's a reason we can't ask folks to raise their hands. Uh, not that we would do anything with that, you know, calling on them, but.
Provide your public comment just with yes or no questions.
I wouldn't, if I may, it, it wouldn't be considered a poll. It, it would just be a preview of
Preview.
Individuals who would be open to providing public comment.
Okay.
But can you, if we were in the council chambers, you might ask the folks in the audience to raise their hands to, to indicate if they want to speak now or speak at the next meeting. That, that's.
Yes. Okay, well, um, then I would like to ask those that I have this, those listening in still, um, please raise your hand if you would like to speak tonight. If you would like an opportunity to speak tonight, understanding that we will be um, continuing the, continuing this item to a date certain with an opportunity for public comment at that time.
I, I just, I'm sorry, Chair, I just wanted to clarify. It, um, I, I heard about an adjourned meeting.
Adjourned, adjourned.
A continuance, correct?
Not a, yes, I'm sorry. An adjourned meeting, which we know the date of, which is Thursday at seven P M. So I, I do see two hands. Um, and, and thus, I, I do appreciate your guidance, uh, Mr. Murdock, on the contin- the continuity of the meeting to have the staff report first and then listen to um public comment. And thank you for preemptively accepting the challenge to keep track of who comments so we could be in order when we start on Thursday. So with that said, staff or, um, before we do staff report, can we have a five-minute restroom break? All right, let's do a five-minute restroom break. It's eleven o'clock, so we'll come back at eleven oh five. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Esteemed consultants from Diet and Batia, Allison Moore and Rajiv Batia. Uh, Ms. Moore, perhaps you could uh project the screen. Uh, let me make sure that you're able to.
Um, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, I just enabled it. Thank you.
Gotcha.
Great. Um, so uh, we are uh here this evening uh for a continued public hearing from the adjourned meeting on June eleventh. This item initially included consideration of a recommendation to City Council on the General Plan Update and Certification of an Environmental Impact Report or E I R, in addition to the item up for your consideration tonight, uh, being the Sharp Park specific plan. The Planning Commission on June eleventh made a recommendation by a vote of five to zero with two commissioners abstaining to adopt the General Plan Update and to certify the E I R that covered both the General Plan Update and the Sharp Park specific plan. The City Council will consider adoption of the General Plan at a special meeting at nine A M. on Saturday, June twenty-fifth. With the General Plan Update and E I R recommendations concluded, the commission this evening will focus on consideration of the S P S P only and make a recommendation or consider making a recommendation to the City Council. At the public hearing on June sixth, I explained the benefits of having a Sharp Park specific plan. Uh, there are many advantages and I'll summarize them briefly again, uh, including providing updated information about our community to inform decision-making, including public investments in infrastructure, transportation projects and other community facilities. Uh, updated standards uh incl- uh to improve the development review process, including the ability to apply objective standards to housing projects, which is increasingly important under state law. And assisting the city to seek outside funding, including uh grant funding for particular public improvements, uh, including the example I provided of the city seeking a One Bay Area Grant or O Bag Three Grant Funding for ADA and bicycle improvements on Paloma Avenue from Francisco Boulevard to Beach Boulevard. Having an adopted plan supporting those types of improvements can, can support the city's uh funding applications and improve its chances of receiving those grants. Because this is a continued public hearing, the commission will need to provide an opportunity for public comment, which we touched on a few moments ago. Uh, since only one plan remains to be considered this evening, the Sharp Park specific plan, the commission could provide three minutes of public comment and remain consistent with the structure of the June sixth public hearing, where the commission sought to provide three minutes for public comment on each plan for a total of six minutes. Given that the Sharp Park specific plan is the only remaining plan to be considered, three minutes would fit within that framework. And then following the conclusion of public comment, the commission can then deliberate and determine when is, is appropriate to consider a recommendation to City Council. So with those introductory remarks, I will now turn it over to Allison Moore from Diet and Batia to provide some additional detail on the Sharp Park specific plan.
Thanks so much, Christian, and thank you for your patience, Commissioners. I will make this very quick. It's mostly just a recap of the um June sixth presentation. Um, but Christian provided an overview of some of the benefits of the Sharp Park specific plan. It contains eight chapters and includes policies on land use, mobility, urban design, infrastructure, coastal resiliency and resources and implementation. Um, it helps guide the future of Sharp Park in the direction the community wants and makes it easier for these goals to be achieved by providing clear guidelines and policies. Um, the impetus for the Sharp Park specific plan has um been an idea that's been around for a while. Um, it builds on the Palmetto Streetscape Project in twenty fourteen. Um, yeah, as well as the priority development area designation made by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission um in twenty twenty. Um, in tandem with general planning efforts, there's been a vast depth and breadth of Sharp Park visioning activities, workshops and the like. And just a refresher on what the vision for um Sharp Park is, um, a vibrant mix of uh different land uses, housing, um supportive businesses while maintaining um what's great about its coastal locale. Um, so just quickly, uh, as I described on the sixth, one of the most important guiding principles is to create a vibrant mix of uses along Palmetto Avenue mainly, and then um to a supporting extent along Francisco. Um, and this north-south corridor focus aims to create an energetic spine to support economic vitality, place-making and additional housing. Um, that focus also helps to preserve the smaller-scale residential neighborhoods that are really beloved of the area. And to support that, policies in the Sharp Park uh specific plan include more intense land uses, um mixed uses, um mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use center. Um, increased height limits and a ground floor overlay along Palmetto that requires active ground floor uses and design standards to really activate the public realm. Um, building on improvements along Palmetto regarding mobility, um, this chap, the mobility chapter focuses on improving connectivity within Sharp Park as well as with the remainder of Pacifica, um, in addition to improving the public realm. And policies in this chapter focus on improving east-west corridors because the north-south ones are, are pretty good. Um, and the east-west corridors that it focuses on are Paloma and Clarendon, the two gateways at the northern and southern portion of the planning area, and then San Jose, which connects to the pedestrian bridge and to Eureka Square, which is also part of the planning area. To connect to Pacifica and the wider region, the plan emphasizes coordination with SAM Trans and linkages with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Policies also support other mobility choices and less dependence on cars as well as maintaining adequate balanced parking supply, both for longer and shorter term parking. Place-making and creation of a harmonious urban fabric is an also, is another important guiding principle. The Urban Design and Public Realm Chapter includes policies and standards for streetscape design, lighting, wayfinding and gateways, public gathering places and green space, building design, which includes height, massing and articulation, building orientation, entries and facades and parking design. And then preservation of coastal views is explicitly addressed. Here's some examples of policies here. When we get into, um, later on, we can talk more about um specific um standards. Oops, sorry. Um, in addition to public services and utilities, the, the specific plan also addresses coastal resiliency. Guiding principles balance maximize benefits for coastal recreation, coupled with protection of public and private investments. Um, the Sharp Park specific plan is designed to be consistent with the local coastal um land use plan and the local coastal program as well as the infrastructure resiliency project that is um continuing. Um, that, that was all the slides that I have for now, uh, but when we get into discussion two, based on um Planning Commission's recommendations, there may, maybe some slight tweaks to policies and language in the Sharp Park specific plan that we can bring up at a later time. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And so that concludes the staff's presentation. We are available to answer questions, but we also understand the commission might want to shift to uh receiving public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock, and thank you, Ms. Moore. Really appreciate that you're, everyone here is still on tonight. Um, I'll open up public comment now.
Thank you, Chair. And we have two hands raised for, and free now. So there are several folks that would like to speak. I will get us set up to receive their public comment momentarily.
And while you set that up, uh, just a reminder that we're taking public comments tonight on the Sharp Park specific plan. Um, and, and not on past agenda items like the General Plan or the E I R. Um, so specific to the Sharp Park specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Berman. Thank you, Chair Berman. And so with that in mind, the first speaker will be Richard. Please go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Richard Harris. I'm president of the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance and our attention has been on the Sharp Park golf course for several years. And we've been, we've appeared before you and city council over the years. We're familiar with staff. And we thank all of you for your attention to these issues. I'm going to be unavailable Thursday, so it's better for me to do it now. This is to, I sent you a letter today, June 19. Three-page letter deals with the wording of a single paragraph in Chapter 1.1, Sharp Park's Past, dealing with the golf course. There are a couple of factual errors in the, in the paragraph that I set out in my June 19 letter. Ask you to pay attention to that letter. The two, to summarize, the two factual errors are at the at the, as written, this paragraph in section 1.1 at page 1-3, your packet page 360, identifies John McLaren as one of the architects of the golf course. That's incorrect. The architect was Alistair Mackenzie. John McLaren was the San Francisco's park supervisor at the time. Mackenzie, of course, had to work with the park supervisor, but McLaren was not an architect. And the other point is that the golf course was never used as a, as an internment camp or a relief camp. The language in the paragraph that I cite to you garbles the relationship between the golf course and the remaining 300 acres of the, of the entire San Francisco Sharp Park property. The golf course was never an internment camp or a relief camp. I give you citations to contemporaneous newspapers and to the California Resource Agency forums at footnotes 1, 2, and 3 on those facts. Ask you to pay attention to that, and I've given you some corrective language at page 3 of my letter. Ask you to pay attention to that as well, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker will be Raimi Tan. Please go ahead. And it looks like Raimi has lowered his hand, so let's try to call up next speaker, Cliff Lawrence. Please go ahead.
Hello, Cliff Lawrence again. My question for you this evening is, how is the present consideration of the SPSC, SPSP, not a moot exercise at this point? Is it in fact that ultimately the SPSP needs the city council's approval, but it's only the coast of California, sorry, California Coastal Commission which can grant its certification? What exactly is the current working relationship between the city and the CCC? The city's approved LCLUP lingers at the CCC a year and a half so far, waiting for certification. Has the Coastal Commission been clear as to what they would require before providing certification? What is the city's plan? Do we plan to get certification of the SPSP before the LCLUP? Or will the SPSP join our LCLUP in limbo at the Coastal Commission? Pardon the analogy, but to an outsider, this looks a little bit like a game of chicken. So again, the question, how is this not this current consideration of the SPSP not a moot exercise? And I thank you.
Thank you. Raimi Tan, your hand is up again. Please go ahead.
Hi, again, Raimi Tan, architect, specific matter. I'd like to, you know, thank Diet and Batia. They did a great job on this Sharp Park specific plan. I am concerned again because it should be considered with the general plan and the housing element, which is again, has half as much housing as the, as the arena. So I'm just wondering if this plan probably needs to be re-updated in a very short period of time. And consideration should be given since it's a pretty, you know, it's right on a transit corridor, it's very walkable. And it's not in any of the green spaces and hills, you know, it's not ideal spot to add more housing. So I would kind of question some of the light purple areas, mixed use, if they should be densified to the more dense mixed-use center. And, you know, perhaps some of the, you know, the, you know, height limits might actually need to be raised a bit to accommodate that density. And especially, you know, you could use some more height maybe along the main street and then step down to meet the adjacent one-two-story residential. So just thoughts on that. Again, I think, you know, like the previous speaker said, you know, we do have to consider the housing element on this and so you know, we can approve it now, but you know, please keep in mind it probably needs to be updated in a very, very short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Berman, there are no other hands raised.
And are there any call-in hands?
All participants would be in the same panel here, given the Zoom format, and so everyone on the app or dialed in would be showing.
Okay, then I'm going to leave public comment open and tonight we will adjourn to Thursday. What is the date? The 21st, 2nd, 3rd, 23rd?
June 23rd, yes.
Thursday, June 23rd at 7:00 PM is when we would adjourn this meeting to. And we would start that meeting with a public comment.
Yes, just to clarify, Chair Berman, the action I'm hearing is to adjourn, or is to adjourn this regular meeting of the planning commission to Thursday, June 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
On Zoom.
On Zoom.
And so the notice of adjournment will indicate the Zoom link for participants to join that meeting as well.
Great. And remind remind me, do we take a motion for this? Yeah, all right. So I made that motion to adjourn the meeting as previously stated to Thursday. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hauser.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Can we vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes with four votes in favor and two abstained and one absent.
All right. Before we leave, anyone agree by the action of the planning commission as 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council? If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. All right. Thank you. Good night, everyone.